We thank you, Father, for our nation and for our community. We pray, Lord, that you would continue those blessings. I pray for those that are in a position tonight of leadership. We pray for the commissioners, and we pray, Lord, for your wisdom, as you've promised in your word, that you would give it if we ask. Lord, we are so grateful for what you've done. We ask you, Lord, to continue your blessings. Lord, we'll give you the glory, and we'll thank you for all that you do, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Smith?
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another roll call, please.
Commissioners Burkey.
Present.
Irvin.
Present.
Haycock.
Present.
Jacobs.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
And Vos.
Here.
The organization of the Planning Commission, the first item is the election of chairperson.
I move to nominate Jim Vos, James Vos, as chair.
One second. Thank you. Any further nominations? Shall we vote?
I need one more vote.
Are you a yes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The election of vice chairperson. The nominations are open for vice chairperson of the commission.
I move we nominate Sandy Smith.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further nominations? Shall we vote, please?
Motion passes seven zero.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. I don't think we need another roll call, do we? Since we all know who we are. Very good. Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is allocated, excuse me, is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding an agenda item. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speakers' cards are available at the rear of the chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If we have any in to test the public hearings tonight, the all-staff report will not be presented if, one, no one in the audience wishes to speak in opposition to the item to be heard; two, the applicant has reviewed the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report; number three, the members of the commission wish to waive the staff report. The chairperson will then entertain a motion to act on the item. First item on our agenda tonight is... On our consent calendar would be the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 16, 2008.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16, 2008.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thanks, Ms. Smith. There was just one possible correction under item six, under the abstentions of Commissioner Jacobs. Actually, he did not vote. On item number six, he was, he left the dais and wasn't in the room. So I don't know that that would be called an abstention. Shouldn't it be a no vote or no voting, not voting?
Probably can change it to absent.
Absent.
Or concussed.
All right. Any other corrections or comments? So with that correction, then, how do you vote, please?
Clarification to Commissioner Irvin and I vote on this since we were not present, we were here but we were not commissioners.
I don't know. Mr. Adams?
We were not sworn in yet.
Because you were present, there probably would not be a problem if you voted to approve the minutes.
Did you say not be a problem or not against?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's vote, please.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is continued public hearings. Item number two, conditional use permit number 0405 and tentative tract map number 60348. Without objection, we'll open the public hearing. And we have received an uncontested letter on this one. Is that correct, Ms. Watson? Okay. Thank you. Do you have any speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not. Just for point of clarification, I'll say this at the start of all these extension requests so that everyone's clear on what's going on. Last week, the state legislature passed as an urgency bill, and the governor signed Senate Bill 1185. The effect of that bill was to grant an automatic 12-month or one-year extension to all active tentative maps within the state of California. These particular extension requests had either been previously considered and continued to this meeting or were previously noticed. This action, as well as any other extensions that you look at this evening, would, in essence, grant an extension of an additional year beyond that that has already been given to them. This is the only time where we're going to have this situation, as staff is not accepting requests for extension, given the fact that all the maps that we have right now have an additional year already automatically added to them. But be aware that these would not be extended for the year, the one year into 2009. They would, if you were to grant the extension, grant them an extension to the year 2010. So just by point of clarification on it.
So then, if I understood you correctly, any tentative tract map extension application that's in the pipeline then would not be processed further?
Yes, because there's really no reason to do that.
Sending everybody, those applicants' letters and just telling them?
Yeah, any that have already filed, they'll have their fee refunded to them and, you know, informed that we can see them again in a year.
Very good.
How would that affect the extensions before us tonight concerning additional conditions?
In talking with the city attorney about this last week, you can add the conditions, assuming obviously the applicant has agreed to them, but be aware that those conditions wouldn't take effect until one year from now, because technically the map is already active now for another year beyond this.
So the imposition of the conditions are 12 months after, at the next expiration date, I guess you'd say?
Right.
Brian, what would happen if we denied them?
If you denied the extensions, they would still have their additional year. They would come back before you again in a year for consideration of an extension, assuming the state hasn't passed any additional legislation. And at that time, you could consider whether to add conditions to them or not.
Do you have any idea why the governor would go ahead and do this? It's quite unusual, isn't it?
It's unusual but not unprecedented. In the mid-1990s, the state actually granted ultimately two extensions that totaled three years to active maps. And it tends to be an action that certainly the Building Industry Association supports when you have an economic downturn. Obviously, people trying to keep maps active, hoping that when the economy turns again that they will be able to make good on that. I think that was the reasoning for it.
The maps that we approved last month?
Yes.
Are they one-year extensions now, or will they also have two-year extensions?
Any extensions that you approved last month that granted them an extension into 2009 now are into 2010.
However, the conditions that were applied are in effect on this?
Yes, yes, they are.
So, Brian, even if it was the third extension, they would still be extended into 2010?
Yes. Yeah, the state specifically extended beyond the normal five-year time and gave them six.
Anything further? So since we do not have any speakers, it would be in order then to close the public hearing without objection? So the motion's in order then on CUP 0405, tentative tract map 60348.
I'll move approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0405 and tentative tract map 60248.
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to grant the one-year extension to May 22, 2010 with the added conditions.
Motion passes seven zero.
So the next item is public hearing on vesting tentative tract map 60057. The hearing is open. This is also an uncontested public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards on this one? Do you have speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, we do not. All right. So no speakers. It would be in order then to close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order on this one as well.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to June 21, 2010 for vesting tentative tract map number 60057.
My second.
Mr. Burkey, Mr. Molly, thank you. Let's vote, please.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item number four. It's a public hearing on tentative tract map 60573. And the recommendation on this is a continuance. So the public hearing is open. Do we have any speaker cards on this one?
No, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, in taking a look at this, I'm not certain there's any need to continue it. I'm not sure we should even, we even need to act on it in light of the legislation.
Are you saying that because the continuance is so short?
Well, if you extend it and consider it in August, what you'd be considering is an extension into the year 2010. It already has its extension into the year 2009 by virtue of the state's action. I'm not certain there's a purpose to...
Even take this up?
To even take it up. That would just be my comment.
But we have opened the public hearing, I believe.
Yes.
Puts us in somewhat of a quandary. If we've opened the public hearing and it's now open for action, I guess it would either be to continue or deny. What would you recommend?
I think in this case, I would recommend you deny the request, and that way you see it again in a year.
Thank you. Okay. Since there's no one to speak on this item, the public hearing is closed, and a motion is in order either to, as Mr. Ludiki suggests, to deny this item or to continue it. What's your pleasure?
I move that we deny tentative tract map number 60573.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to deny tentative tract map 60573. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next item is item five, which is tentative hearing on tentative tract map number 61303. So the public hearing without objection is open. We have received a letter agreeing to the conditions uncontested. Do you have any speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It's appropriate to close the public hearing then, and what's your pleasure?
I move to grant a one-year extension to June 19, 2010 for tract map 61303, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added conditions numbers 12, 13, and 14, and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you. Second?
My second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Next item is item six, which is a hearing on tentative parcel map 62803. The public hearing is now open. We have an uncontested communication letter on this as well. Any speaker's cards?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have one.
All right. Is the applicant present? Or are the applicants representative? No. Okay. Then let's hear from the speaker.
Mr. Brinkman? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
I didn't hear your name, sir. I'm sorry.
Robert Brinkman.
Thank you.
And according to the green notification card, it talks about limiting my issues in the future if I don't attend this meeting. Directly south of the property, there's a vacant lot that I own and the long two-and-a-half acres I also own, where I have a house and garage and stuff. My residence isn't shown on there, but it's directly below the vacant lot. So I'd like to clarify or request that I still have rights to protest, because when I went to Planning Department counter and Engineering counter, they had no maps available except for the staff report, which is just words and no drawings. So could I also have the right to continue future protest if I need to? Because I'm actually directly involved in this.
So let me see if I'm clear on what you've said, and I'm sorry if I'm going to ask you to repeat yourself. You're saying that the information that you asked for was not available at the public counter relative to this application?
Yes, they didn't have any.
You didn't have anything that you could look at, huh?
Correct. They sold me a three-page staff report, and that was it. And I went to Engineering, and they said there's no maps available.
Okay.
They had a picture similar to this one here, and that was about it. That's the same pictures on the green notification cards.
Okay.
So I'm in a bit of a quandary.
I'm sorry?
I'm in over the barrel right now. I don't know what rights I have if I'm not here.
I see. Well, maybe Mr. Ludiki can assist you there.
This is his subdivision.
Okay.
This piece of property, what he would do is divide off the southern area.
Right. He's a neighbor I've spoken to.
He would have this one.
But where's the road? Where's the street lighting? Where's the drainage? All that type of stuff.
He'd be required to install that as part of the subdivision.
That's right. But how do I know if it's going to affect me in a negative way?
Okay. I think, Mr. Chairman, take his testimony and we'll answer the questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Did you want this back? Sir, did you want this back?
No, you can.
Thank you.
Go ahead, if you have anything else.
That's it. Just I'd like to retain my rights to protest if need be in the future.
I don't know, I don't know if that's possible, but I heard what you said, and it's a matter of record, so we will engage our staff here and see where it takes us. And we may ask you to come back to the podium again if we need some clarification.
Okay. Well, on the green card, it's quoting California Government Code, section 65009, that if anyone wishes to challenge the nature of the proposed action in court, and I assume other ways also, they may be limited to raising those only issues raised at the public hearing described on this notice here or written correspondence delivered to the planning. So that means if I'm not here, I have no legal right.
Mr. Chairman, in my brief discussion, I think what he is interested in finding out is what the requirements for improvements would be in conjunction with the subdivision should it go forward, street lining, paving, curb and gutter, things of that type. And I believe Carlisle Workman probably could answer that.
That's what we have in our staff report, right? Okay. So maybe Mr. Workman can explain that to you. You go ahead and sit down if you like.
Okay. Thank you.
With the subdivision that's proposed, they would be required, he would be required to build the street improvements adjacent to the property. That would mean that he would be building half the street improvements on his side of the center line, plus 12 feet beyond center line, pavement, curb gutter, typical street improvements. The issue of street lighting, I do not believe that there will be street lighting installed there. That area right now does not have street lighting. It would have required, I believe, one street light, and because of the character of the rest of the development, it was not required. But the curb gutter and street improvements, pavement, will be required on both frontages of this proposed parcel map.
Excuse me, sir. Let the staff finish their report.
Drainage will continue draining as it does today in a northerly direction. At this point, improvement plans have not been prepared. They will be prepared as part of the final parcel map, and at that time, the improvement plans for street will address the drainage more fully. I don't know what the design is because it's not been prepared to date.
Let me just back up here, Mr. Workman. If I understood you correctly, you indicated that street improvements would be required, typical street improvement require curb and gutter, street paving, and so forth. However, the tentative tract map approval that was approved in March of '06... However, the, um, tentative tract map approval that was approved in March of '06, I think, indicated the city subdivision ordinance establishes street requirements intended to retain the rural character of the area's street improvements on L4 and 21st West would be designed per rural street standards and consistent, consist of... Interesting. Consists of feet of 30-foot pavement. I don't know what that means exactly, but two-foot rolled curbs on both sides of the street and 10-foot pathway in this, um... And then the applicant is also conditioned on providing a 30-foot wide paved access from the ac, uh, from the access to, or from, access from the nearest paved street, although that condition has been removed.
Yes, the rural street standards do require curb and gutter, not curb and gutter, rolled curb on both sides of the street. There will be no paved sidewalk. There will be rolled curb on each side of the street and 15-foot of paved.
But if I heard you correctly, you said curb and gutter, I think.
I, uh, misspoke. It's rolled curb.
Okay. I just, to make sure, so the record is, so the record is clear, and, uh, however, within the, um, additional condition number five, which is added tonight to this, talks about street lighting design. However, it says it's the direction of the Public Works Director, so it's, it's discretionary, then?
That condition is more to address the fact that any street lighting systems required will be city-owned and maintain street lights versus Edison-owned and maintained.
So we're clear, then, that in this case, the developer of this two-lot subdivision would be building half a street on their frontage on 21st West and L4, basically a half a street frontage, with a rolled curb, no street lights, right? And they're not going to be building any, uh, improvements either south of, west of, east of, or north of their property line?
At this time, no, they will not be required to pay to the nearest paved street.
Okay. Okay. And no street lights?
And no street lights.
Okay. So if they don't happen to have, if there doesn't have to be dedicated public right-of-way from the center line, what do we do?
Any right-of-way that's required to complete those improvements will have to be obtained. It will need to be a road deed for any off-site right-of-way acquisition.
Okay. All right. So hopefully that clears up some of your questions?
Well, again, Mr. Rose, uh, Mr. Workman did say that there is no, uh, map available yet. It wasn't, hasn't been developed for the...
There's no street improvement, there's no improvement plans available because there's no project, because we haven't approved the extension.
Right. So that way, I would like to have a, a right to continue.
I'm assuming they'll be available as soon as they're submitted, if and when they ever are.
Okay. So at that point, do I have a...
Anyone would have a right to look at them, you bet.
And what about protesting?
Well, that's, protesting what?
If I find out that it's not, uh, compatible with my house or the area.
I, I'm assuming that's what courts are for. We, uh...
Okay. So what you're saying, I still have the, uh, the right to pursue any avenue I'd like to, uh...
You, you have every legal right to pursue whatever right you believe you have.
Okay.
The commission is approving a land use tonight, or maybe approving a land use tonight, um, and conditioning the land use for a specific set of conditions. If, if the developer chooses to proceed forward, they will develop improvement plans in support of that, and, uh, those will go through a plan check process, um, and, uh, any, anyone would have a right to take a look at those. Um, I believe they probably charge you for copies, but they do for everybody, so...
But again, you're saying I have the right to look at the plans?
Improvement plans, yes. If and when they're produced.
But I'm not interested in just looking at them. I'm looking at them, according to your notice that the Planning Department sent out, I have right to, uh, protest.
You have a right to protest this action tonight, and if that's what you're doing, you're on record doing it.
Okay. So according to this document...
So if we're clear, your protest is you don't want this map to go forward. You don't want it to be improved.
There's no map, according to, uh, Mr. Workman.
No, I, I think you misunderstand. There is a parcel map. That's it right there.
Right. I understand the parcel map.
That, that's all we're looking at tonight. We're not looking at any improvement plans because there aren't any to look at.
Okay. So in the future, when, um, someone else comes up with a drainage map, I have then, I still have established...
If you can, if you can keep track of the action of your neighbor and, and how he develops his property and how he submits to the Engineering Department, you bet you can, you can look at anything he submits.
You keep saying "looking at." I'm not interested in just availability to look at something.
Well, I think, I think it's a play on words here. The process tonight is an action of land use. It is not an action of approving a development per se, all right? That comes later. If the owner of the property chooses to develop his land, he must develop it according to the conditions where we place on it. And once those conditions are placed on it, he has the choice to move forward with those development plans and submit them to all the agencies, not just the city, but a number of agencies in the community. And any citizen can look at those and can do whatever they choose to do. It's out of our hands at that point.
Okay. But you keep using the word "looking at" versus, uh, ability to protest.
I, I don't know how much clearer I can be, sir.
Okay. Um, with all due respect, do you know the difference between looking at a set of plans and protesting what's on the plans?
Uh, you can do anything you want within the law at the time you choose to do it. Go ahead.
Um, essentially, the, the points at which you would have the ability through the ci, through any city action to, to challenge. The applicant could not legally subdivide the property without recording a final map. They cannot do that until they get approval of a final map that the City Council would do. The approval of that final map would include the approval of any improvement plans, so you would have the opportunity, uh, at such time that that matter is in front of the City Council to challenge that.
Right. That's all I needed to know.
Right. And if you were not satisfied with that, um, the state law you're referencing, um, basically says that if you were to take legal action or challenge in court anything beyond the city's, uh, you know, the city's processes, that you have made the record. You, you've been here, you would have been at the City Council meeting on their final map, so the court would say, yes, you've exhausted all your administrative remedies and we will hear your case.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Very good. All right. It's appropriate to close the public hearing, and then what's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I move that we grant a one-year extension to March 20th, 2009 for tentative parcel map number 62803, subject to added conditions number five through seven and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, based on the recommendation of staff. Any further questions or comments?
I need one more vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is item seven, tentative tract map number 64249. Excuse me. Uh, it's appropriate to open the public hearing on this item. We have an uncontested letter in file, accepting all the conditions. Do we have a speaker's card on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Is it appropriate to close the public hearing then?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I'm sorry, we do have one. Uh, the person is uncertain as to whether he's against or not. He, he has questions.
All right. Then why don't we have a staff report on the item, and maybe that'll clear up your question, which I should have done the last time, but here we are.
We'll get it figured out.
Ms. Watson?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, those Commissioners. Vesting tentative tract map 64249 is requesting a one-year extension. The location is approximately five acres located on the southwest corner of Avenue M4 and 32nd Street West. The request is a subdivision of nine single-family lots in the SRR zone. Staff recommends that the commission grant a one-year extension to June 19th, 2010, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to all added conditions seven, eight, nine, and all other previous conditions. On June 19th, 2006, the planning commission approved tentative tract map for two years. This is their first request for the extension of the map. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commissioners? The Speaker, please.
John Swanson?
Yeah. I have a question about the, um, map there. It's kind of hard to see, but it says, sees a cul-de-sac right here.
Could you step a little closer to the mic, please, sir? Thank you.
Sorry. It, there shows a cul-de-sac here. How do you get into that cul-de-sac? So it's M4 there, correct? Is that M4 or is that M2? I mean, I saw the previous map that was up there. The previous map shows M4. Do you come down M4, turn, um, there's no street there?
Yeah, that you go south, it, it's Street A. It's not labeled yet, so that would be south going into, uh, Street A and then going in.
Okay. So this is the only entrance to M4. So M4 there goes all the way to where you can see it, that ends into the desert. The improvements that this, um, developer wants to do, would he be developing all of M4? And then because you're going to have heavy traffic, correct? Because all those people are going to be coming down M4 to get into this tract? Is that how they're doing it?
Um, the street improvements will be on 32nd Street West, Avenue M4, and coming down Street A and into the cul-de-sac.
What about M4? M4 is very narrow currently. I live at that vacant lot there.
I think your question is that, is, are full street improvements going to happen on M4 in front of the property? And the answer is yes.
Correct.
Okay. And then street lights?
Correct.
Okay. And then this is a one-year extension?
This is just for a one-year extension.
It's actually two years, given what Mr. Ludiki previously reported.
Right, I understand.
Of 2010.
Okay. So right now, we can, this is just a preliminary hearing for this, and then if, in fact, you do an extension, then they can come in and develop, start developing tomorrow?
Uh, no, sir. What they have to do, this is just a, an extension for the map. They have to proceed with going through the Engineering Department of proceeding with the final map, doing the drainage, the road improvements, and it's quite a process, and that's why they're asking for an extension, because they, this last two years, they haven't had time to develop those plans. So this is just a request to continue the, the tentative map process.
Okay. I understand. All right. Well, thank you very much.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then it would be in order to close the public hearing and consider a motion on the staff's recommendation.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to June 19th, 2010 for vesting tentative tract map number 64249, subject to added conditions seven, eight, nine, and all previously approved conditions.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes seven zero.
That concludes the continued public hearings. We now have new public hearings, beginning with item eight, which is a, is one-year Item eight A is tentative tract map 61490. Uh, we have re, which, uh, it's appropriate to open the public hearing. We've received a uncontested letter on this item as well. Uh, do we have speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, we don't. All right. So if there's no questions, it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to July 18th, 2010, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added conditions numbers nine, 10, and 11, and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you.
Seconding.
Mr. Molly, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is item eight B, which is tentative tract map number 61574. Uh, the recommendation on this item is to continue it till the August meeting. Um, is it appropriate to open a public hearing on this or not?
Um, I would not open it, and I think what we will do is go back and talk to the applicant about the situation, and I, I doubt you'll see it again.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So it's appro, uh, would be in order then to consider the staff's recommendation and a motion.
What's the motion?
The recommendation is, is continuance to August 18th, 2008. That's the recommendation.
Actually, it, it may just be better if you don't act on it, period.
Don't act on it, period?
Yeah. You haven't opened the hearing. I, I don't, I don't think you need to take action.
So instead of denying it, we don't act on it at all?
Just don't act on it.
Okay.
It's, oh, well.
That's different than the last one, right?
I know. We, we had an open, open hearing then.
Okay.
I, I promise the state won't do this to us more than once a year.
All right. Did you have something to say, Ms. Watson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Procedurally, it may be prudent to just, uh, to entertain a motion to table the item, uh, and that it would be tabled indefinitely.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion would be to table the item, if someone were to care to offer that?
I'll move that we, um, table the tentative tract map number 61574.
A second?
Second.
Is that you, John? Moved and seconded to table the item. Any further discussion? How do you vote, please?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. HC is tentative tract map 61600, which is... Appropriate to open a public hearing on this, since we have received an uncontested letter. I'm assuming that's correct still? Good. Anybody to speak on this?
Uh, no speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. It's appropriate to close the public hearing then and consider a motion. It's your pleasure.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to July 18th, 2010, on tentative tract map number 61920, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added conditions number 14 to 16, and all other previous approved conditions.
I think we're on...
On eight, eight.
61600.
Oh, I'm, I'm one down. It's tentative tract map 61600. It's tentative tract map 61600.
To June 20th, 2010?
That's it.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Eka. Do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you. Next item is eight D, which is tentative tract map 61920. Appropriate to open the public hearing on this item? We have received an uncontested letter, accepting all the conditions. Do you have any speaker cards, Mr. Ludiki?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, we do not. All right. It's appropriate then to close the public hearing and consider a motion on 61920.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to July 18th, 2010, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added conditions numbers 14 through 16, and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Burke. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you. Next item is eight E, tentative tract map number 63201. Objection, we'll open the public hearing on this item. We have received an uncontested letter on this item as well. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mr. Chairman.
There are not? All right, then it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on 63201.
I move that we grant an extension to July 17th, 2010, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to added conditions number five, six, seven, and all other approved conditions for tentative tract map number 63201.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'll just mention, I'm going to be glad, I'll just be glad to see that we'll complete that area over by that shell station, so that one dirt lot sitting there empty is going to be nice to get completed.
It will. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
All right. All right, we're now into item nine on the agenda, which is a general plan amendment 0405, a zone change 0406, and tentative tract map number 62757. So, is appropriate to open a public hearing in this item even though the recommendation is to continue this until September 15th?
Yes, we've received that request from the applicant to continue.
But to hold the, hold the hearing on it?
Yes, you should still open the hearing.
Yeah, all right. And then do we leave it open until the 15th? Or do we...
Yes, it would be continued over until the 15th.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. So the public hearing is now open on item number nine. Do we have, let's see, item number nine, is it continuous? So we have, do we have speaker cards on this?
No, Mr. Chairman, we don't.
We do not? All right, then. Then there's no need to hear a staff report on it, since we'll hear it on September 15th if, unless somebody wants to hear a staff report. Anyone want to hear a staff report? Doesn't look like it. All right, then. It would be appropriate to consider a motion based on staff's recommendation.
I move to continue general plan amendment number 0405, zone change number 0406, tentative tract map number 62757, pardon me, environmental impact report number 06-06, to a September 15th, 2008 planning and commission meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Oops.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you. The next item is item number 10, conditional use permit 07-11. So it's appropriate to open the public hearing on this item? We have received a uncontested letter on this particular item, however, I expect we will have some speaker cards and comments on this, so it would be appropriate then to hear a staff report on this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. The item before you involves slightly over four acres on the northeast corner of Avenue K and 20th Street West. The request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of approximately a 43,500 square foot commercial and retail center. That would include a slightly less than 16,000 square foot drugstore with drive-through service. The applicant, under the conditional use permit, is also requesting the approval of incidental off-site sale of alcoholic beverages with the drugstore proposal. As shown on the site plan, the proposal consists of four separate buildings. Building one, which is the proposed drugstore, would act as the overall anchor for the center. Buildings two through four are proposed as a combination of retail and restaurant uses that would, would be in addition to the main drugstore use on the site. Access would be provided to the property both from Avenue K and from 20th Street West. There are medians proposed that would allow for a left-turn access on north, or, excuse me, on southbound 20th Street West at the project driveway. That median would extend southward some distance from the project site, and would also have the effect of limiting left-turn access into the existing center currently located on the west side of the street. Access would also be permitted from the Avenue K side, but only in a right-turn in-and-out situation. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, as far as the, the improvements are proposed, our traffic department has spent quite a bit of time looking at this particular layout. They have tried to accommodate, to the extent possible, the desires of the major tenant in terms of access. They are also proposing improvements on the, at the intersection and along the frontage of the property that would allow for the, the flow of traffic within that location. This would include a second westbound left-turn lane on Avenue K. Excuse me. Excuse me, that's not true. They, they had looked at the potential for a second westbound turn lane on Avenue K, but because of existing right-of-way constraints, particularly on the south side of the project, as well as alignment issues with the roadway on the west side of the intersection, they would not be able to accommodate that. Instead, they have proposed some alternative measures to, to deal with the traffic impact at that location. One of the things, as I indicated to you, that they have requested is the sale of alcohol from the proposed drugstore. As currently shown, they are recommend, or proposing slightly over 1,500 square feet of sales floor area for that. As indicated in the city's municipal code, there is a limit on a maximum of 10% of sales floor area for an incidental alcohol seller. We have indicated to you a proposed condition that would reiterate that to them, and they would have to demonstrate at the time they brought any plans through, that they do meet and comply with that requirement. In addition, they would be required the, the normal conditions that are listed within chapter 17.42 of the municipal code in regards to alcohol sales. Staff has also included within the recommended conditions of approval some modifications to that, in particular, a limit on alcohol sales hours that would run from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and a restriction on any separation of, of alcohol containers that are intended to be sold as a multi-unit pack. They would not be able to break those apart and sell them in any kind of single container format. In looking at the, the operation of the center, we have recommended to you a restriction on hours of delivery. Those would operate or be allowed from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The reason for the restrictions is largely because of residential uses that do exist to the north and to a portion of the east side of the site. The architectural design for the center uses somewhat of a contemporary craftsman style of architecture, quite a great deal of reliance on tower elements, eve overhangs, and stone. In addition, in discussions with staff, the applicant has proposed a, a feature at the corner to help provide some additional architectural relief and interest, since none of the buildings on the site plan are at the corner itself. We believe that the, the request does offer the opportunity for the development of this remaining site. It would provide the opportunity for additional services within this area. We also feel that there is an opportunity, given the existence of housing, particularly to the north of the site, to allow for some walkability between that residential unit use area and the services and goods that would be available within the project. We have recommended to you approval in accordance with the restrictions and conditions as contained in the attachment to your resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So before we continue, any questions, Mr. Ludiki?
Well, I did, I was, I took a drive there, and I was kind of concerned about the traffic. Do we think that median is going to be enough? Does it offer businesses on both sides, good traffic flow? It won't hinder the current business going on off to the west side, the Denny's, the area there?
Because there are alternate ways into there, that I don't think that prohibiting the left turns in is that big of a hindrance. Anybody coming from the east can drive down Avenue K and turn into the center. They can also make a left turn if they're coming from the south, and again, turn into the center. There are several ways into the center that would accomplish the same thing as the existing left turn.
It would also be a safer turning movement through the signalized intersection. Would it not?
Yes, it would. It would be safer than trying to turn across the three lanes of traffic, two lanes of traffic.
Thank you. Any other questions, the staff? Before we...
I was concerned about, there's residences very close to the north, just a wall away, really. The sound and the light. It was addressed in the description, but remind me, what is the size of that wall that is between the north residence and the shopping center?
I believe that wall currently is four, excuse me, five to six feet in height.
Okay.
It's, I think it's like a five-foot block wall, and then it's got wrought iron on top of it, so it's...
And then there's planters up against the wall, is that correct?
There, there's currently that along, I believe, the, the north side, the, the proposed project does contain a planter strip that would be adjacent to that wall on the south side, on the, on the commercial development portion.
Is there a condition called out for what would be in that planter?
We require, in those kinds of circumstances, normally evergreen trees of some kind, so they get some height and provide that, that protection year-round. Those would be planted, I believe, a 20 or 25-foot-on-center requirement.
And those would be planted at maturity, or they would grow to maturity?
I think the normal size that we found works best is a 24-inch box. It allows the, the plant to acclimate fairly well without the problems that we sometimes get with larger ones, and we find that, you know, over time, it, it tends to work pretty well.
Is there an example of that in the city somewhere?
We had some great ones until the, we, we had some problems with our Leyland Cypress. I'm trying to remember offhand if, if there's one I can specifically point you to, and I, I don't remember if the project that's at the southeast corner of Challenger Way and Avenue K has sufficiently replanted with some other kind of evergreen to achieve that same effect. But for a long time, they had Leyland Cypress, and it, it did a pretty good job of, of screening it to the, to the point of, of when we lost a lot of those trees due to a blight condition. We, we did get a number of comments from the neighborhood, you know, indicating where they're going to place something as a, as a replacement.
And the water condition was caused by?
The, the blighted condition or the loss of it. I believe it was a beetle infestation of some kind that attacked all of those trees citywide.
So it could be a concern with this also?
There's always that possibility. We would recommend using some kind of a pine or other evergreen that is, over time, proven to be pretty resistant.
Okay, and as far as lighting, I know that, that was addressed, that the light was on the parking lot side of the buildings.
Yes. The other thing that we tend to do is they usually have some kind of a lighting on the back wall of the buildings. We've had pretty good success with hooding those, so that the light is directed downward onto the walkway, and that's what they're intended to light, is that walkway area behind the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Still concerned about the noise?
You're still concerned about which?
Noise.
North, yeah. All right. Thank you.
I have a question on condition number 15, conditional use permit. Shall we return to the Planning Commission for an annual review? What exactly would that allow the Commission to do?
Within the, the city's alcohol provisions, chapter 17.42, the Commission is, is allowed an annual review of any conditional use permit that's approved for alcohol sales. It gives you the opportunity to take a look at whether there are any specific impacts or effects that are caused by that alcohol sales condition that perhaps weren't foreseen or were not dealt with in the original conditions of approval. You, as a Commission, would have the opportunity to review that situation and impose additional conditions to control the problem if need be.
Is it just concerning alcohol, or say there's a, a noise or light problem? Would that allow us to address that?
If, if you feel that there was something that was calling into question the original findings of approval, in other words, on a conditional use permit, one of the things that you're required to do is determine whether or not there's any potential negative effect of the use on adjacent property. If that lighting or that noise was causing some kind of an effect, yes, you would have the opportunity at that same time to, to impose additional conditions if, if it was shown that they would mitigate the problem.
Any further?
Obviously, the, the landscape, I mean, it's going to go in line with whatever the city council decides. Thank you.
I have one more question, probably for Carlisle. Did the owners of Park Lane, did they make any comments on the traffic, the driveways?
To my knowledge, we've received no comments.
Thank you.
The owners of which?
Park Lane.
Park Lane.
Clark Tower.
Okay. All right. Well, then, why, if we're done with our Q and A, why don't we ask the applicant then if they wish to make any comments on this project before we listen to the rest of the speakers? Were the applicants representative, if they care to offer something?
Mr. Chairman, we have, we have one who indicated... Mr. Chairman, we have one who indicated to us that she was speaking for the applicant, Marin Van Norman.
Good evening, and welcome.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Marin Van Norman. I'm with Civil Design, the civil engineer on this project, and I'm here on behalf of the client, Annapolis Valley Land. Just wanted to share with you our excitement about this project, that we have met with city staff repeatedly. We've gone through four rounds of Development Review Committee on this project, and we have made every effort to comply with all the city standards. We feel that the project is in keeping with the existing zoning. It's within the surrounding land uses, comply with what we're trying to introduce. And we also have a tenant, Long Struggs, is going to be our anchor in the sixteen thousand square foot building, who is quite a ways into the process with us and excited about the location and bringing further business to the city of Lancaster. So we'd like you to consider our project favorably. And I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. We may have a few.
Okay.
I do have a question. Commissioner Burkey brought it up earlier about the wall that is to the north?
Yes.
On the map here, the prints, it says that they would extend that wall up if requested.
Correct.
Because that is, that's a pretty short wall.
Right.
And you've got apartments like right directly behind that wall, so that would be considered?
Right.
Bring that wall up?
The wall has not been surveyed in final detail. Final grading plans will be done at time of improvements. We only have conceptual grading on the site plan that you see, but the wall will be surveyed, and it will be brought to a six-foot minimum as required by the city. So if there are portions of the wall that need to be taken down and rebuilt or extended, that will be done. Additionally, as in the conditions, there will be an eight-to-ten-foot landscape planter there, which will provide additional buffer. So it will be built per the city standards, and there will be a minimum six-foot wall.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if we're going to continue on the wall, if, then, that wall is, you said it hasn't been surveyed, so I mean, you haven't determined whose property it's on? Is that what you mean by that?
No, and final heights, because it may vary based on the condition of the wall.
Okay. So if it requires an engineered wall to be developed there because of your grading plan, and it requires the neighbor's owner's cooperation to do that, then you're, then the condition to install that would be incumbent upon you and your expense, right?
Correct, correct.
What about the three-foot-high or so tube steel that's on that as a barrier around that entire development? I'm assuming that somebody approved putting that up, so would that also be added?
Well, walls will be checked in plan check according to the engineering department, so if they deem that that is in compliance with the area, if they want to keep that effect aesthetically to have, you know, block wall and then tubular wall, we would do what they would approve us to do.
I think it's there for security. I don't know, Carlisle, what typically do we do in those cases?
Typically, the tubular steel fencing is added if the height is felt to be inadequate. It may have been their request. I don't honestly know the history of it. If that is still a concern, from an engineering standpoint, I wouldn't have an objection to having tubular steel on top of a six-foot wall. At some point, there's a limit to how high you feel you need to go, and it's something that could be considered in the design of the wall. As part of the grading plan check, the walls will be looked at. It's obviously an option to maintain that on the top of a new wall.
I'm assuming it belongs to the neighbor. I'm assuming the wall belongs to the property to the north, it doesn't belong to this applicant.
Well, it somewhat depends on where the wall was constructed. If it's constructed wholly on their property, that would be correct. Typically, walls are built either on the property line or just inside the property line. That would be part of...
Surveyors never make mistakes, I know.
No, no. I would say that would be part of the survey and part of that grading plan to determine exactly where the wall is relative to the property line, and that will be part of the review through the plan check.
I guess what we don't want is a contentious situation wherein the condition is established that is reasonable, and then we get into, we, the city gets into a position of having to direct traffic and negotiate these things between developers and adjacent property owners. And then it comes, you know, comes back to us to split the baby, and we'd like to avoid that if we can. However, if you do go out, you know, when you go out there, the wall is about five feet high consistently with a three, over three-foot-high tube steel with tines facing this particular property and facing outward all the way around that complex from the street to the north and the west and the east and like that. It's there for security reasons, I'm sure. I mean, that's, whether it was authorized or not, but there it sits, so somebody's going to have to deal with it. And I, you know, I'm waiting to hear if that's a standard that the city is okay with.
Well, actually, within a residential zone, which the project to the north is, we have allowed that. I do not specifically remember whether we approved this. One of the difficulties, however, that you've touched on is we do have situations at times where property owners or developers are perfectly willing to install a new wall, and for whatever reason, the owner of the existing wall doesn't want that wall removed. What we've done in the past is encouraged through the condition that the applicant make every good faith effort to, you know, replace essentially the wall with a brand-new one that achieves what we want in terms of noise, buffer, and other things. But we also normally will allow them an out such that if, despite all their efforts, we're unable to get compliance, or they're unable to get approval to remove the wall, we will let them build a second wall if we think it's that important to creating the separation or the buffer that we think is required.
But that's not written into the conditions here tonight before us?
I don't believe so. It's, where we normally run into it is in residential settings.
So then, depending on where we go with this tonight after all the hearing and whatever the commission decides, we may want to add something or adjust one of the language a bit to include that, so...
Sure.
So everybody knows what the direction we're going in. I don't know under the ordinance if you have the authority to make that determination. If you do, then it's probably not necessary to include it.
That's true, although I've found in the past it's best to, if that's the intent of the commission, if we call it out in the condition, then it's clear to everyone that that's what the commission was wanting to have happen.
Would the applicant have any objection if that was added to the conditions that we clearly identify the responsibility and the cooperative effort? And if you're unsuccessful in negotiating a settlement on the north wall, that the planning director then would be Solomon in this case and make a final determination?
Yes, we would be willing to accept that, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, that's number one.
Okay.
Don't go away. All right, anything further? Any other comments or questions of the applicant?
The location of the, current location of the dumpsters is pretty close to that north area as well.
You're talking about the northeasterly corner where the trash enclosure is?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, is there an option to move that? Maybe take another look at that, because that is rather close, even if there is a wall there, the noise. If the trash company comes early in the morning, the noise from the dumpsters...
I guess I can open that potentially to planning, however, there are conditions on trash enclosures, whereas they cannot be seen by any of the frontage roads. So in order to hide it from Twentieth Street West and Avenue K, we kind of have limited options on the site plan of where to situate them. Furthermore, I believe that the trash trucks will be, must comply with the same hours, right, as the rest of the onset vehicles?
No.
No. So I don't know if planning has a comment to say?
The restriction she's referring to is that you cannot have a trash enclosure that openly fronts, you know, opens onto a street frontage. They would have to work within that.
So that, if I can...
Sure.
So the trash enclosure that's in front of or to the west of Building Two, which looks like a two dumpster enclosure, does not front onto any street, it fronts Building Two?
Correct.
And this particular enclosure with three back in the hole in the corner might also be a very problematic turning movement for those handy-dandy little trash trucks at whatever time of the day show up. So they'll have to pull in and back out, as near as I can tell from the radius.
Correct, however, turn movements have been examined on the site plan. All drive aisles comply with fire standards, and I'm sure that the trash truck is no larger than a fire engine, and so trap, turn radiuses have been examined and are adequate.
Do you agree with that, Carlisle?
Turn my microphone on. I agree that the turning radiuses have been checked for fire department access. Now, as far as how the trash truck would back out, I'm assuming they would pull in frontwards in and try to back out and should be able to make that movement.
You require a thicker paving section in there or concrete for the trash truck movements?
No, we do not.
Why not? Seems to me, if you go to a shopping center, it's been in existence a while, where you have lots of turning movements for trash trucks, you tend to tear up the asphalt and dig holes and then when folks deposit refuse into the containers and they leak, and then they get down into the chuckles in the asphalt, that maybe one might want to consider a condition to put a concrete section in there that doesn't deteriorate quite as rapidly and makes it for a much better longevity.
Currently, we do not have a requirement that they build those out of concrete. Something we can look into.
Got something else here? Okay. I'd like to mention that aesthetically, you did a good job. It looks nice.
Thank you.
What's the, on the westbound Twentieth Street West, excuse me, on the southbound Twentieth Street West, on the east side of that median, which is your left turn into your center, if I understand the staff report correct, that added raised concrete median will eliminate the ability for entrance and exiting to the commercial center to the west, which is currently the condition, however, will now be blocking that opportunity, right?
Yes, it would eliminate left turns into the center on the west side of Twentieth.
When I read the staff recommendation and traffic issues here on the Resolution Oh Eight Seventeen, talking about the stacking on K and nine-car passenger vehicles and so forth, it's absent language on the stacking on Twentieth Street. So what's the expectation of what that stacking is supposed to be? How many cars are we going to stack in there? Going southbound on Twentieth, turning left into the...
Based on the length of the turn pocket, you should be able to stack about seven vehicles.
Has anybody laid a scale on that possibly to see? Because the lanes are, what, twelve-foot wide typically for those turn lanes?
Turn pockets typically...
That's what it is on K, anyway.
They vary from ten feet to twelve feet. In this case, I believe it is actually a ten-foot-wide turn lane.
So the scale shows one hundred and thirty-five feet of stacking. But I think unless it's an optical illusion, there's a taper there, and I think if you put a scale on it, it's less than ten. So I think you only got about fifty-five feet of ten-foot or greater width, which would only be about three cars, maybe.
Are you saying that the one hundred and thirty-six-foot dimension is...
The one hundred and thirty-six-foot is correct, but the width is narrower than ten feet. The width between the drive lane and the median, the median's tapered there, it's not straight, right? It starts out at zero and then widens out as you go south. It starts out at the traffic lane at zero, and then as it comes south, it widens out so cars can pull in.
Right. We will require that be a minimum ten feet between the two medians to allow the turn lane in there.
And you will require how many? What I'm trying to get is how many must be stacked in there as a minimum? That's what I'm trying to get at, because the report doesn't, and the recommendation doesn't say.
I don't know that there is a minimum that's required for stacking. We're providing one hundred and thirty-foot, one hundred and thirty-six feet, which should allow for about seven vehicles. To my knowledge, there's not a minimum requirement of stacking for a turn into the center.
Okay. I guess what I'm, maybe I'm not making myself clear.
At the north end of the one hundred and thirty-six-foot area, how wide is the turn lane?
It's less than ten feet.
Is it less than ten?
And it also is at a hundred feet, and it also is at seventy-five feet.
Where the one hundred and thirty-six-foot area reaches the forty-seven-foot tapered area, where those two meet, how wide is the turn lane there?
The turn lane will be ten feet wide after it goes through the taper. None of the lane lines are shown on this map. This is not a striping plan showing the lane lines.
But the median is given, is a given. So you're measuring from the curb face of the median, are you not?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So if you measure from the curb face of the median on the west side of the one median to the east side of the other, and you draw a north-south line, you will find that the width is less than ten feet.
This is at an angle here.
What I'm trying to determine is that...
When the striping plan is prepared and when this is re-striped, they will provide a ten-foot-wide lane for the full width of the median and the taper.
From roughly one hundred and thirty-six feet?
Yes.
Okay, and if that's the case, I got no problem, but that's not the way it's demonstrated here.
So it's not to scale the width, obviously?
Okay.
When we do the striping plan, the engineered plans, it will be that way?
I understand that, but the, if I understand this site plan correctly, it's based on a survey of existing conditions. So if the applicant is saying, and the traffic report says, put, you know, two through lanes and two left turn lanes and one right, and yada, 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 right? Then the site plan should demonstrate that. Should it not?
If we were including all of the striping for the lanes, I would say yes, but it is not a typical representation.
I'm not asking for a striping plan. What I'm asking for is if the street section says it's thirty-seven feet wide, I know how many lanes we can get in that. And if the turn pocket says it's less than ten feet, I know how many cars I can't get in that. All right? So if you're telling me that what we're supposed to approve tonight is a throat that's one hundred and thirty-six feet long, then I'll go with you.
Can we add that as a...
But if the applicant comes back and says, gee whiz, the existing conditions won't accommodate that, then I guess it'll be back before us, won't it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Great. Very good.
I guess Mr. Chairman is asking for some specificity to the numbers. You want some specifics?
I'm just asking, because it's specific on all the rest of it. Which carries us to the next question. The applicant is being required to extend the concrete median north from his property line north, some distance of 100 feet or more, looks like, to continue the left turn opportunity into the next street as well as into the businesses on the west side of 20th? Okay. Why then aren't we requiring the applicant to extend the raised concrete median in K to finish up Avenue K?
Typically, we require that the median be extended for two reasons. One would be to extend it far enough to prevent turning movements into a driveway near the end of the property. Another reason would be to extend it far enough to provide protection for the turning vehicles, so returning it through a transition to a full width median. Did not consider that it was required to extend it another 200-plus feet. It was off-site improvements above and beyond. There is a gap, I understand that, of about 200, 250 feet. But it wasn't required to prevent turning movements, and it already provides the protection of a full width median. Didn't feel that it was necessary to require it in Avenue K.
There's no direct access from those, what's identified as existing commercial on the site plan, direct access into Avenue K other than from a shared driveway to the property further east?
At approximately 18th Street West, yes.
Right. So those, but it's also not striped there for left turn movements going eastbound either, is it? Allowing the left turn movement? I couldn't tell you.
I believe it is striped as a two-way left turn lane to allow that, but I don't have a photo that is enlarged enough to be able to see that.
So this median proposal in K, the new raised concrete median proposal in K then, you feel we're okay as it relates to the properties to the east? There's no reason to extend that? And maybe a reason to stripe it, but you can deal with that with your street striping plan?
We can definitely stripe it, and at some point in the future, it will be likely that it will be extended. I did not feel that it was an obligation of this particular applicant to complete that. It's more of a city-sponsored capital improvement project that would complete that median.
Does a recently built, commercial building wasn't required to do it either?
It was not.
All right. Thank you. Okay. In the parking requirements that have been requested by the applicant, an adjustment under Section 1712.100, changing the parking requirements from the required 238 to 219, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. What consideration, if any, was given to the outside seating for restaurant use in Building Two and Building Three?
Building Two and Building Three? Well, our parking distribution has been refued with planning. We had to comply with the tenants' requirements for Building One. We also needed to comply with internal circulation and line of sight issues. Therefore, we did the parking to meet the minimum requirement, and we asked for the variance, feeling that we've met the standard, that there will be more than adequate parking. I'm not sure that I'm answering your question appropriately. I don't know if Brian would like to speak at all about that.
You're answering it. The question is, what consideration was given to the outside seating, quote patio, locations in the parking calculation, if any?
I cannot answer that question. Brian, can you?
I don't believe that the outside dining area was calculated into it, only the building area.
Okay. So given that there's, at least based on the site plan and on the renderings and elevation, it's likely that there will be outside seating sometime, weather permitting, I guess. But no consideration was given to that additional seating above and beyond the building capacity, and the recommendation is to lower it even further than the minimum. Is that right?
That would be correct if it was not considered, yes.
Okay. What about on your site plan, and you'll never see it up there, you have 10 or 12 locations on the site plan where folks will be backing out, and they only have one direction they can go. And what I mean by that, for instance, at the northwest corner of your site plan, west of Building Three, the two parking locations adjacent to the word patio, the only way a person can back out there and turn would be to the east. They can't back to the west because they'll back into a parked car that's there, assuming there's a car there, and vice versa. And up in the hole up there where it says 13 compact, 16 stalls, you're backing into the planter area or over the sidewalk. And in front of Building One on the west side, you've got four locations there where the cars will be backing into one another. And over in front of Building Two, you've got two locations over there. And adjacent to Building Four, you've got another one. So how do you justify cars backing into one another or only being able to go one way?
Well, we do not feel that cars will be backing into one another as minimum drive aisle widths have been met, and parking has been scrutinized in great detail as we've looked at the site plan.
By some, yeah.
Yes, by all of the team members extensively, yes. In terms of backing in one direction, I'm not sure if the city has a mandate on that. However, as we've addressed parking and circulation, we've talked about, for example, the northeasterly corner, where they really only have one direction to back out in order to exit that location. And it will be specified in some of those tighter corners by the retail operators that those will be employee parking spots. The less desirable spots will be employee parking spots, as all retail operators like to keep their prime spots open for patrons. I'm not sure that I can say much else to answer your questions, other than we hope for the common sense of the citizens here as they drive. I don't know if the city has...
You are aware of the condition that you have to do a Phase Two analysis on the site and drill the site?
Yes.
Because there's a potential plume heading your direction?
Right. It's because of the off-site location within the two-mile radius. Nothing was identified onsite, but we are, we will be doing a Phase Two as part of the condition, yes.
Okay. Tell me about your proposed location for onsite underground retention/detention. That's a new one?
Okay. The onsite detention/detention basin is to address some of the drainage. It's to retain all of the onsite drainage. It was required by the engineering department. The location was chosen after the preliminary grading was done. And I don't know if Carlisle designed that with our engineering team, if he has any further explanation?
The point of requiring this is to try to recharge any groundwater possible. When we do a grading plan, there will also be a more extensive soils investigation. A big part of whether or not this will be successful is going to be determined by what the underlying soils are. We will work with the engineer and the design of that to take advantage of it if possible. If the soils report comes back that there is no feasible permeability, then it will not be required. It's required where it's going to be feasible, and we will be working with that, getting further soils investigations to determine whether or not it will be successful.
So the driving force for the requirement to have an onsite detention basin is to capture the nuisance flow onsite and to return it to the groundwater in effect? Those are my words, not yours.
That is the intent to, not just nuisance water, but any storm water. If whatever can be captured and put back into the ground, that would be the intent.
Have we done this before in this fashion?
We have conditioned other projects. To my knowledge, we have not built any in a commercial setting. We have built some retention cells in the bottom of basins for residential development.
Interesting. And they don't silt up and they don't have challenges with it?
Well, there's required maintenance to go in and clean them out and restore that permeability, because they will accumulate silt, but there are methods to maintain them.
And that's the owner's responsibility, then?
In this situation, yes. In residential settings, the basins are dedicated to the city, and the city maintains the basins. This would be the responsibility of the owner.
Okay. That's new to us.
It is. It's a new thing. We've been conditioning for a couple of years, and we're hoping that it will be a success.
The applicant's comfortable with that requirement?
Yes, we are. Yes. Our engineers have worked extensively with Carlisle on this one.
Let's talk about alcohol sales for a minute.
Okay.
The condition, as I read it, says something to the effect of, if I understand it correctly, sale of single bottles or cans that would normally be in a package of some form cannot be sold. In other words, you can't break apart a package to sell the alcoholic beverages. Is that, that's my understanding. Is that yours?
Yes, that is, as was explained to us by the planning department.
But if, what about fortified wine or malt liquor and stuff like that? Is that a normal product that this tenant will be selling in his store?
I cannot answer that question. I don't know.
Okay. That's something I think we knew, that I'd like to know.
I could ask, I know that our planner has spoken extensively with the tenant, and the tenant has reviewed all conditions given to us by the planning department, in addition to the square footage of sales and the hours of operation, and they have complied.
All right.
What are you asking, Jim?
Go ahead.
I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure what you're asking about the wine.
In some alcoholic beverage sales, it's not unusual to see the sale of products that have a higher-than-normal content than your typical six-pack of whatever brand, pick a brand, of beer or whatever. For instance, you may find fortified wine at 18% or 20%. It's a, you know, it's a quick hit. And, you know, in large, and your normal, your regular person doesn't buy that. Folks that are interested in getting hit pretty hard pretty quick buy that sort of stuff. Personally, I don't think it belongs in a neighborhood drugstore. I've got enough problems with them in liquor stores, but whatever.
Thank you for clarifying. I wasn't sure what you were saying.
That's just my opinion.
I'd agree with that. I definitely think we have enough liquor stores in that area. I'm glad you guys agreed to lower your square footage as far as alcohol sales.
Yeah, I'm not sure their sale variety. I know that Long's Drugs is in good standing with the Alcohol Beverage Control Licensing Board, and so it probably is a...
All those products are legal to sell.
Right. So they are aware of the conditions that have been presented to them thus far and are in compliance, are happy to comply with them.
Mr. Liddick, do you know how the conditions address this particular situation that Mr. Vos brings up?
It's a, we've tried a number of different things over the years to try to deal with them. The biggest concern that I have is making sure that you don't inadvertently restrict what I would call a legitimate product. And, you know, we used to condition things by sizes. It was pretty simple. But they sell dessert wines and other things that are legitimate sellers in smaller containers. Sometimes those run afoul. We have done a couple of different things. We have tried to limit minimum sizes of containers for things like malt liquor and beer. And depending on whatever is the packaging at the time, we've tried to come up with an ounce size. We have also simply stated that you can't sell fortified wines or Cisco-type, as they call it, sales of things. And the most recent thing that we kind of wrestle with is the sales of what I would call flavored beer. And those are things that you might see as Mike's Hard Lemonade or things like that. My understanding is they are not a liquor. They are technically a beer. And those sometimes are difficult to try to get a handle on also.
So the concerns that have been voiced are real?
You try and restrict what you would call probably the less legitimate types of products while making sure that you don't inadvertently restrict someone who's legitimately buying things that may be in smaller containers, because quite frankly, it doesn't make a lot of sense to buy a huge amount of it.
Cooking sherry comes to mind.
Yeah. Dessert wines are the things I hear all the time, you know. Quite often, they're sold in about a half-size bottle compared to normal wines, so.
So in this applicant's particular case, the only, the way this reads, it's the packaging that's the guide rather than the product. So we're not limiting, so the fortified wine is not limited in this particular store?
No, not as we've gotten it. What it would prevent, however, is things like the flavored beer that I mentioned before. They couldn't break that apart and sell it separately. They couldn't sell separately. Wine coolers used to be a problem. They were particularly popular among underage teenage drinkers at times. So, you know, but it seems no matter what you come up with, and I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't try, but it seems that sooner or later, the packaging figures out how to get around the restriction, whatever it might be.
So if it under Condition 15, this is something that we could look at in a year if we felt there was a problem or the planning department thought there was a problem?
Yeah, that is one of the advantages of having the annual review. You can take a look and see, is there a problem at a particular location because of something?
So whether it's this application under CUP for alcohol beverage sales or any other applicant, then that's a standard condition that we would expect?
True. And let me, I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to point out, this conditional use permit would only permit the sale of alcohol in an off-site setting from this user. Any other tenant that came on the site that proposed either on-sale or off-site sale of alcohol would be required a separate conditional use permit, and you would see that. So we're only talking about the drugstore under this area.
Does that impact the remainder of the center? Does it open up the whole center?
As far as...
If...
Oh, no.
An applicant came in for a on-sale whatever?
No, and that's the reason that we want the separate CUP, so that you can deal separately. If there were, let's say Long's operates and it's not a problem, but let's say you got some other user that was a problem, you want the ability to handle that CUP separately and if need be revoke or place requirements on it.
And it would be an equity too, in fairness.
Sure. You don't really want to penalize the responsible retailer, but.
Well, you're right. The marketers of the beverages have figured out how to get around whatever regulations might cause some of their clientele.
That's absolutely right. I, I'm glad that we brought that issue up because we definitely don't want alcohol to create a loitering condition, and that would be detrimental to the residents of the area, so.
Yeah, and I would point out, although they're not listed separately here, the requirements out of the city's alcohol ordinance do place a responsibility on the part of the operator to monitor that kind of thing on their site.
There's also in here, in the condition, it's on page two of the proposed resolution 0817. The second whereas, it's not identified, it's just a dot, specific action 19 dot 1 dot 5, small e. Therefore, the development review process requires trash enclosures, loading areas, mechanical equipment, and outdoor storage areas to be screened from public view as appropriate. I'd like to suggest, and maybe this is the intent, that would include all roof-mounted equipment as well. In the mechanical equipment arena, now I'm assuming that's what that means. If it's not, maybe we need to include that if everybody agrees.
Actually, that is a part of our standard conditions already.
So it's screened from, from what view? Public view would be, what about the folks in the two-story apartment houses? How do we deal with that, or is that?
Actually, actually, in some cases, we can deal with it with line of sight from them. Standard condition five B on, which is under the standard resolution 06 dash 16, does require that when they submit building plans, they must demonstrate the method of screening rooftop equipment.
Okay. So we're okay with that then?
Yes.
Okay. Under the standard conditions, number 31, and I think I mentioned this the last time we met, I would suggest that if my fellow commissioners agree that we add to that some standard language that I've seen in other jurisdictions, that the developer provide a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week telephone number and contact person if, in fact, there is a problem with debris and blowing dust and so forth during the construction project because you are adjacent to residential as well as other commercial users. And we want to make sure that folks, the neighbors are protected as well. I mean, construction doesn't necessarily take that long, but it is problematic and they are all kind of downwind, pretty much. If everybody concurs on that.
I agree.
I agree. That's all I have. Do you have anything more? You can certainly say whatever you'd like from.
No, just we appreciate your consideration. Clearly, you've thought about this, Commissioner.
Before you go, I hate to retread an issue that we've already gone over.
Okay.
But the trash.
Okay, the trash enclosure.
Still concerned about that north trash enclosure.
North Easterly corner, okay.
As we've heard from Mr. Ludicki, the delivery hours are restricted, but that doesn't count for the trash truck. And we know that service times for the trash start at six, I think it's six in the morning for commercial. So we could have quite a bit of noise, two, three times a week in that area. And I would ask planning and you, is there any way that we can figure that out so it wouldn't be so much of a problem? If you had the ability, regardless of their laws, what could you, what would you do to fix that problem? If I lived right behind that and you were waking me up every morning, how would you fix that problem?
Wow, I'm on the spot. Okay. You know, all I can say is with this site plan, we've gone through actually 22 iterations and have moved the thing from one side to the other. And with the space that we're given, we feel that this is the best configuration. Perhaps we could reach some sort of agreement with maybe enhanced walls, enclosure space, although I'm not sure that would really help the truck noise. I don't know if there could be, you know, I hesitate to even suggest some sort of a redesign because the site plan, you know, has gone through so many iterations and to get circulation and line of sight and comply with all of the codes. I don't know if there could be consideration to maybe have it within more of a public view to be able to pull it from the corner and further from the residents. But I don't know if trash truck routes are individual for commercial as opposed to residential, or would it be entering the site the same day it enters the residential site so they're hearing it in their apartment complex anyway? You know, I don't, I don't know.
I think Mr. Jacob.
I'm not sure if I can answer that adequately, but.
I think it's in our purview to put it wherever. If we don't like it where it is, we can suggest it be moved and suggest where it ought to go and let you respond, so.
I mean, do you have any?
I think you just heard an opportunity.
Okay.
And where would you like it to be moved if you had your druthers? Would that be fair enough? Mr. Jacob?
Yeah, I'm just looking for some options. I'm not trying to redesign the whole center, but I do see a potential problem, and there may be a way to mitigate that noise issue while infringing on maybe some other, stepping on some other rule.
Right.
But maybe there's a way that we can fix it.
Can I toss that question to the experts, maybe? And see if they have any suggestions?
Now, this issue does not seem to be a small one. That was my main concern when I brought up noise at the beginning, is the trash.
The trash enclosure. Is there any way we could restrict hours of pickup, or would that be?
If you can figure out how to control waste management, good luck.
I personally would not have a problem if you restricted that. Can you get the trash picked up after seven in the morning?
I don't know the answer to that, but.
Sorry, Brian, I'm.
Yeah, I, I don't think any condition on waste management's hours is going to work very well. There's a couple of things I think that we need to look at, and like a lot of other things in the review of design, it's a matter of balancing. My suggestion, as I look at this, would probably be given the fact that you want to try to maintain as much open parking in front of the building as possible. You want to try to move it away from adjacent residential as much as possible. Probably the easiest thing to do is to take the three parking spaces that are to the south of that right now and flip them with this, with this enclosure. That would.
Identified as 3C?
3C. That would move it, you know, an additional distance of, I'm going to say probably close to 30 feet away from, from the north property wall. At the same time, I wouldn't recommend pushing it to the east property line because you've got residential there too. So I think that would be, as I look at it, probably the best balance that you can achieve. The problem, you could put it out into the parking that's in front of building three, but once again, you're looking at the prime parking areas for customers there, and there are some significant problems that you do encounter. We do have centers where we've done that. But I can tell you, when people park next to those, the issue of trying to back out and look around an enclosure is not, is not a great one. And I would say if you've got to set that situation up, I would think it would be better if you did it in this parking area that's likely to be occupied by employees that are there most of the day.
So, Mr. Ludicki, what you're saying is move the trash enclosure to 3C, and will, where the trash enclosure used to be, will that now become parking?
Yeah, I'd flip the parking over there. That would be my suggestion.
That would help.
That's about 80 feet from the nearest house.
Have the landlords, especially the landlord of the north unit, has, have they spoken up on this? Have they gotten involved in this process at all?
We have gotten no comment from them.
Got any speaker cards?
No, not from them.
If I were the landlord of the north unit, quite honestly, much of this would be very positive to me, to bring services to the area, to make my units more desirable. But that one blemish on it is something that would be great to fix. I think moving those trash bins over to 3C would help.
That's a good idea, Brian, on the spot.
Anything further from anyone?
One other comment I'd like to make is the issue of alcohol. I don't want to rehash the entire thing, but I see that as not just an issue for this applicant, but I see that as an issue that's probably going to come up throughout the term of this commission because it is, I think, a consistent issue across this board. So Brian, whatever thought you can put into that in helping this commission to set some standards that we can feel confident in recommending on the alcohol issue would be very helpful to us.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the thing that we're looking for there is things that are, you know, get at the core of the problems that we've seen. And in some cases, it's the type of user, in some cases, it's, you know, the type of things that they sell. But yeah, you know, it's an evolving process, I think.
I would guess proportionally, a major tenant drugstore selling incidental alcohol is not as problematic as a type 21 liquor store in a less desirable part of our community. Okay. Anything further from the commission? And then this young lady can sit down. She's probably had enough of us this evening.
No, thank you very, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have other speaker cards?
I have two others, Mr. Chairman. Ray Shavera.
I guess I have to be careful when I spoke to her as a young lady. Now, I don't know, what do I, what do I call people like you and I, old men, Ray?
Okaying to that, sir.
Welcome.
My name is Ray Shavera. I'm here as the Chair of the Alamo Valley Alcohol Tobacco and Other Drug Policy Coalition. I'm happy to say one of the early promoters of the new alcohol zoning orders that we have, Commissioner, that we copied somewhat after Palmdale's example. I want to thank, well, I want to congratulate Commissioner Vos. I remember some years back, he and his superintendent of schools attended some of our high desert alcohol policy coalition meetings. I want to thank some of you here who have had some connection to our local efforts to reduce alcohol-related problems in this community. The facts are, though, that the type 21 license which Long's would operate with is a liquor license. Same thing as a mom and pop liquor store. You have another item on your agenda coming up where there's a smaller operation, but same type of license, very expensive normally. The most common license, however, in California for 25 years has been a restaurant license. And I see that future tenants will involve restaurants, and there's hardly any restaurant alive in California that would, that would not want to sell at least beer and wine. So we have more purveyors coming in. I'm happy for the great time that you took. I'm impressed by this commission, whatever the circumstances of your beginning in recent months, with a great concern and scrutiny you've given all items here. We're very much impressed. I hope our chatter back there didn't, didn't disturb you because we're not used to seeing this kind of insight in normal planning bodies, especially up here. But on page two of the staff report, at least that I have, I'm sorry, page five, there are some housekeeping details that you ought to correct. And I think the applicant's representative used one of them. There's no such thing as an alcohol beverage licensing board. You're mixing many things here. It's the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC. So it would be terrific if that, the appropriate language of the state agency involved with control issues would be used in these documents. My time is up already? And on page three, where you refer to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM serving hours, in my long days of drinking, I always looked for 6:00 o'clock AM liquor stores that opened up that early when I was still a practicing high school teacher. In those days, you knew you were an alcoholic if you drank before noon. For 7:00 AM, at least make it eight, makes some sense. Mr. Chairman, may I have a couple of seconds more? I don't know where the complete list.
I'll ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Verifiable, you said. You should mention that hours of operation.
Be slightly shortened. Be slightly shortened because we have to deal with issues of time and space. The ordinance deals with a lot of spatial issues, distance from this, distance from that. But distance and time is important as well because no, no real alcoholic should be permitted to find himself a place to buy booze at 7:00 in the morning, sir. That's a little too early. 10:00 PM is great because police officers all know that after 10:00, especially on weekends, you know, when you've got the alcohol-related problems. The other item that I haven't seen, but it may be on the big list of restrictions in conditions of operation, is that there ought to be a conspicuous placing of the entire conditions of operation somewhere on the premises so your local peace officers or court enforcement officers could observe what the applicant is supposed to be living by. At least them. I think that would be reasonable to include, especially with a major purveyor. Remember that the biggest liquor store in our town is Costco, then in not too far away, Sam's Club, Walmart, supermarkets, they have liquor licenses, drugstores, and then the mom and pop operators. This is the way it is in California these days. And ironically, you have of those types of licenses, off-sale, one-third more than Palmdale does. You're a smaller city than Palmdale. You've got to think about the history of this community and how inundated we got with alcohol when we had no controls. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, another speaker?
Ken Jones.
Mr. Jones.
My name is Ken Jones. I do live on Bisque Street on the east side of Lancaster, and I do work for Lancaster Baptist Church, but I am not here in an official capacity from the church, but as, just as a member from the faith-based community. I am very impressed, I want to reiterate what Ray Shavera said, I am very impressed with this commission. It's just refreshing. I think you've left no stone unturned, and I think you've made the city planners here and the employees work for their money here in looking at some of these issues. I just want to reiterate what Ray said. I would like to see shorter hours. Eight to 10 would be, would be well, would be good. I would like to see you require that the employees go through the. I would like to see you require that the employees go through the responsible beverage service program that's either offered by the state or by a private program, just so that the employees would know. One of the reasons I say that is I have been to many of our drugstores in the community. And I have, although the ordinance does not, in this particular case, we're not allowing them to sell single cans. I see people lined up many times buying this alcohol at five o'clock when they get off work. I have seen some of our stores sell single cans. I think the employees need to know what the restrictions are and make that clear through that responsible training. I know in a year you're going to come back and look at this, and maybe even security might be something we might want to consider in the future. Again, I want to thank you for your consideration. I think you really made our work easier. You've already looked at all the issues. I want to thank you again.
Mr. Jones, I had one quick question for you, Mr. Jones. You mentioned there's a training program, and I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with it, responsible—
A beverage service, yes. It is offered through the State Alcohol Commission, or you can get a private contractor. I know that is available, and it is for the employees. I know Mr. Shavera is more familiar with it.
I don't even think there's a cost for it, is there?
No, it is a free service available. I think it's not—all employees can get it, and then they renew it every three years.
So it's called Responsible Beverage Service Training?
Yes. And I guess they know what, you know, what is it—should I sell to this person? Are they intoxicated? Sometimes you go to a store, you will see an employee—I've been in grocery stores where the person was obviously intoxicated. They were buying a bottle of alcohol, and the—I've seen a cashier refuse to sell if they had the training, and they would not sell it. And then, of course, the manager got involved, but they have the right to refuse to sell. But people have to know that and know what shoulder tap is and some of the things that people do to get alcohol illegally. They need to know those signs, how to card, and who to sell to and who not.
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludiki, is it proper for me to talk right now? Well, speakers are talking. Can I ask a quick question of you?
You can ask, yes.
This responsible beverage service training, is that something that some of our businesses do use?
Yes, I believe they do. Actually, under the city's recently adopted alcohol ordinance, every seller and the conditions that are referenced under Section Number 11, out of that alcohol ordinance, require that for any seller of alcohol.
So this applicant would be required to have their folks go through that training?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually reads, "All employees who service alcohol beverages shall successfully complete a responsible beverage service training program to meet, that meets the requirements of the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control within ninety days of hire. Records of such training shall be maintained and so forth," on premises.
Under that condition, how often do they need to retrain?
There's nothing else in here, but they have to be trained, I guess, at least ninety days a year. I don't know.
Yes, the requirement comes into effect when they're hired. If they have no previous training in responsible beverage service, I don't know that there's a retraining requirement. There isn't within our ordinance.
But if a new employee is trained—
Yeah. I don't know if the state does or not.
I guess the other question or comment that was made, if I heard it correctly, was that the—besides the shortened hours, related to the posting of the, I guess, the conditions of the conditional use permit, is that something we typically do or require?
I believe—I thought that that was a requirement in our ordinance. If it's not, then we can certainly add it as a condition. But it's intended to make sure that, number one, employees are aware of what the restrictions are, and, number two, if you have customers, particularly as the example was given, if you have one that may be belligerent, it tends to provide a little bit more force, you know, and say, "Look, this is what we're operating under."
Anything further from anyone? Questions, comments? A question, the applicant, as it relates to the comments made by Mr. Jones and Mr. Shavera, related to the hours of operation. Is this facility, hours of operation, seven to ten? Are they twenty-four hours, or what are they? Or do we even know? And if you don't know, that's okay. I just—
I cannot answer.
See if we can get you on the record, please. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Excuse me.
The hours of operation of the major tenant, the—is it Long's drug?
Long's drugs, correct. And I know that they issued an operation statement with their hours of operation, and I do not know that information at present. One moment.
My guess is that the alcohol beverage sales are the same as the hours of operation. That would be my guess, but I don't know that—
I would concur. However, I don't know that for sure. And I believe that Long's' hours of operation are under their nationwide regional requirements. They're operating—
I understand.
You know. So I cannot answer that question.
Okay. Well, if you don't know, that's—that's an okay answer.
We would be happy to present an option—yeah.
Just curious.
We would be happy to present them recommendations that you might have, whether or not they can comply with their regulations. I do not know.
Well, the action tonight is to—the recommendation and your request is to approve the conditional use permit, so I'm assuming that's still the case. You're not asking us to continue it or anything, and you get answered.
No, we are not.
Okay. Very good. Just so we're clear. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any further—anybody else?
I have no other speaker's cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Would it be appropriate, then, to close the public hearing?
I had one more question. I'm sorry, Mr. Ludiki, a store like a Walmart that has a liquor license, what are their hours of being able to sell alcohol?
I wouldn't be able to answer that because the city, up until the adoption of the most recent alcohol ordinance, did not control alcohol sales through a use permit for grocery stores, drugstores—
So if they're open twenty-four hours a day, they can sell twenty-four hours a day?
No, they would be under whatever restrictions the Alcoholic Beverage Control License is that they have, or the Alcoholic Beverage License. And as a part of that, ABC would establish restrictions on hours. But what I'm saying is the city did not have a separate approval process, so they may well be able to sell from six in the morning to two in the morning if they were open during those times.
You know, I definitely have a problem with selling alcohol the entire hours that it's open, but me having an infant, having a pharmacy there, and open during early hours and late hours is definitely very convenient for my family. So we want to make sure that we have a balance when we talk about restricting the hours of operation because we want people to be able to get whatever they need conveniently. If it's going to be in the community, it needs to have some type of benefit there.
It is possible, however, to restrict alcohol sales to certain hours, even if the store is open other hours.
Yes, you have that authority.
I don't disagree with that at all.
I personally do like the idea of going to an eight-by-ten on the alcohol.
Well, before the hearing is closed, we have the staff recommendation before us. If I can summarize the issues, I'll attempt to summarize the issues if I can read my own notes here. From the applicant, they seem to be able to compromise as it relates to moving the trash enclosure in the northeast corner into the three adjacent parking slots, which would then allow the trash dumpsters to be about sixty-five feet from the north wall and maybe eighty, eighty-five feet from the nearest residence. The concern about alcohol beverage sales during the hours is recommended from seven to ten. There seems to be a concern about that. The number of parking spaces is less than the code requires, so—and the reason that's before us, if this was not a conditional use permit, Brian, then the director would have the authority to reduce it.
Yes, under the code, there's a maximum of ten percent adjustment available.
Right, with certain findings.
Yes.
However, since it's a CUP, it's the commission's authority, then, to make that determination.
That's correct.
And if the—and then if the applicant doesn't like what decision we make, they can always appeal it to the city council, right?
That's true.
Okay. Whatever that decision is. Okay. So, did I miss anything? The traffic, I guess, was the other comment as it related to the left turn, but I think—I don't know that there's anybody who's got a huge heartburn with that.
And the fence.
And the fence, yeah, the fence to the north and how that's mitigated. But the conditions as recommended are to install a minimum of a six-foot-high wall. So that's the minimum.
The owner seems pretty amenable to trying to work that out.
All right. So, what's your pleasure? We're open for a motion.
Mr. Ludiki, if we—can I ask about the motion? Does a motion have to include what we've discussed as far as the hours of operation, the moving the trash bins, et cetera, et cetera? Will that all need to be part of the motion since—
If it's the desire of the commission to incorporate those changes, what I would recommend you do is—in some cases, it would be a modification of conditions that are proposed. For example, Condition 11, if you were to vote to limit the hours of alcohol to eight— from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that would be a modification of Condition Number 11. Other things that you've noted, including the liaison requirement on blowing dust, the relocation of the trash enclosure, and, you know, certainly if your intent was that the applicant were to use a good faith effort to come up with a single wall, minimum six feet in height along the north and east property lines, that you include those as additional conditions. And the reason for that is it's easier for staff from an administrative standpoint to go down the list of conditions, and when the applicant gets those, they know clearly what your intent was in the approval. And you would simply, you know, add those, or either modify or add the conditions as a part of your motion.
So moving the trash bins would actually be an additional condition?
That's what I would do, yes.
The other question I had, and I look at my notes, finally see what I—on other projects where drugstores and/or grocery stores are proposed, the applicant typically has to have a cart storage identified for their project. And I don't know if this site plan demonstrates that, the secure cart storage, and that then carts cannot leave the site. That's not in these conditions, right?
No, I don't believe it's included. I don't know if that's because Long's themselves do not use carts. I honestly don't know. There's a shift in some cases in certain retailers. However, the better course of action may be to simply require that if they do provide carts, that they have an onsite system installed that essentially prevents the carts from leaving the site. And normally, that's some kind of a wire buried on the perimeter and a locking mechanism that locks at least one of the wheels when it hits that point.
I have something here that we can read into the record if we want to do that. Does everybody understand what the concern is? Okay, good. So are you ready to make a motion, Ms. Smith?
I'll give it a go. This is a list. Hopefully, I have everything down here. So I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 08-17, approving conditional use permit Number 07-11 with the following conditions. I would like to amend Condition 11 to read, "Serving alcohol from the hours of 8:00 AM until 10:00 PM." Additional conditions to include a six-foot minimum wall built along the north part of the property, along the existing residential area. I would like an additional condition to move the existing trash bins in the northeast area to, I believe it's 3C area? I don't have the site map in front of me.
Yeah, I think we can craft a condition from it.
Okay, to 3C. Also, a condition to include the addressing of—the public addressing of blowing dust conditions for the property owner to provide twenty-four-hour telephone contact for the public in the event of blowing dust.
If—oh, and?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just going to ask you, on the wall condition, there is a current requirement on Condition 19 for a six-foot-high screen wall along the north and east property lines. Is the intent to try, from the commission's standpoint, to get a single wall that would act? In other words, it would either be a modification of the existing wall or the removal of that existing wall and a building of a new one to meet the six-foot height? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I believe it would need to be removed since that—the wrought iron or the tubing is currently in that wall.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's a four-foot wall or a five-foot-high wall.
Okay.
But I would imagine that that would need to be removed and a new wall put up.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer.
Could we suggest that since it's already a condition, that the intent, whether it's in the motion or not, at least it's in the record, that the concern would be of the aesthetic value of how it looks when it's done? You know, if it—you have a—for instance, on this site plan, you have the requirement to put six-foot wall adjacent on the east as well as the north property lines. However, on the east property line, you have a three-to-four-foot-high-stem wall with tube steel on top of it. Is the intent to add a mason or wall adjacent to that? I don't think so. Maybe it is. But—so when you look at the—I think the intent is aesthetics, right?
Yes.
Aesthetics and security for the neighbors as well as for the developer.
And I think noise barrier as well.
I'm sorry?
Noise barrier, a bit. I don't know how much difference that will make, but—
Probably none. But whatever. But it's—yeah, noise, aesthetics, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if that's your—if that's our discussion and intent, it does necessarily maybe need to be modified in the conditions, right?
No, but I think we understand the approach.
Okay. All right. She has one more, I think.
A long list.
That's your topic.
And also, if the—the applicant provide onsite area for cart storage and provide electrical device to prevent cars from exiting the site.
The reason for that would be whether Long's uses carts or not, it really doesn't matter because tenants do change. We've actually seen that once or twice, so—okay.
And that is my motion.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Who's second, Larry?
Yes.
Just a question for our constituents here. We're all satisfied with the parking as proposed, all but me.
I am, yes.
Everybody's happy, dandy. Okay? That's not a vote, by the way, just a question of my constituents here. That's not a vote, by the way, just a question of my constituents here. All right, so, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Are we clear on what it is? Mr. Ludicki, are you?
I've got it.
Good man.
Good, I'm glad you do.
We, we spent a considerable amount of time on this item and, and for a lot of reasons, and, and I think Mr. Jacobs pointed it out very clearly. We have no, we do not intend to redesign the project, nor have we done so. I do not believe we have done that tonight. But we've thoroughly investigated it, and it seems to me we've, everybody's done their homework, so, all right.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to discuss the alcohol times.
Yes.
I think staff proposed seven to 10. I, I really don't have a problem with seven to 10. I think there's obviously very many opinions in this room on whether we should sell alcohol, whether anybody should sell alcohol, but we do on all four corners, actually, on the other three. I don't think there's a, a singles can requirement on the other three corners. Not that I'm against the single can, I, I like it. I, but we've put a lot of requirements on this project already. We already have the one-year review for this CUP, and I think we can review it then. To put that condition on right now, I don't really think that we need to. So, I would like to see us go back to the staff recommendation of the seven to 10. I live right around the corner, so it's not like I'm really gonna hop down there and buy a beer at 6:00 in the morning, especially if I'm gonna have to buy a 12-pack. But, again, this is a business. They're trying to do business. They have a drive-through as far as prescriptions. If you're in your boat on, on the way to the lake and you happen to go in at 7:00 o'clock in the morning and you want to make one stop, I don't really see a problem with that. I think there's enough conditions in place that you are going to prohibit somebody from trying to get alcohol in there, especially when there's two alcohol, two liquor stores on the corner that can sell at 6:00 in the morning, singles. At least I'm, I think about that. I think that's correct. I may be wrong in that. So, anyway, I think with that, with Condition 15, we could review it in a year. Other than that, I'm happy with the development.
Okay. So, that's discussion. Do you care to offer an amendment to the motion or did, or, or what?
I think we can discuss it. I don't know that I need to make an amendment if everybody disagrees with me.
I'm of the opinion, we're, we're brand-new. We need to send a message that we're gonna have a keen eye on whatever alcohol sales are gonna happen in the city. And I, and I think, you know, studies have shown alcohol sales in cities, they tend to prey on the community. Just recently, we went to an alcohol seller and he, I'm from a community where what they do is they come into the community and they, they say they're a convenience store, and they offer food items. All of the, all of, most of the food items that I saw in this particular store were expired, and, but all the alcohol was fresh. So, what that told me was that they're kind of preying on the community. They want people to come in there, not necessarily buy food, but to buy alcohol. So, I think the message that we're sending is, hey, if you're gonna sell alcohol, you're gonna do it responsibly, and we have a eye on you. And, and that's just my personal opinion, but I, I think it's, it's definitely prudent that we take a look at that and, and be very keen on what we, what alcohol sales we allow and the times that we allow them.
Well, and I agree with you, and I applaud you with restrictions, but I don't necessarily know that the message that we want to send is that you can't sell alcohol till 8:00 anywhere in the city. I don't know if that's the message that you're trying to put forth.
I don't think we have that oversight to make that decision for the whole city to, to limit alcohol as a planning commission. I think with new developments, we do. And you bring up a point about, you know, if you're going out camping or heading to Vegas or whatever you're doing at 7:00 in the morning, you pick up your alcohol. The point that they do have available alcohol on all the other corners, what's, what's going to stop? Well, I can see your point, I'm just wondering what's going to, you know, what's going to be the big limitation? They'd have to drive across the street to get their six-pack. I don't, I don't know how much alcohol sales there are between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. in the morning. I, I don't know what the impact would be. I, I wouldn't imagine it would be a huge impact, but I think it does send a message, so...
In this particular case, it might be proper to ask the applicant if their tenant...
She's out of hand.
Well, to do that, we'll have to reopen the public hearing, and if that's your pleasure, I'll be happy to reopen the public hearing. You want to hear from the applicant?
I wouldn't mind hearing what she has to say.
We'll reopen the public hearing, and there she is.
Thank you. Appreciate the, the time. I am Maren Van Aarman with Civil Design. Thank you. I just spoke with my client, the landowner, who has had contact with Long's Drugs, and there is concern on our part that limiting the hours might compromise our deal with our tenant, that we are anxiously trying to bring into the community. And furthermore, I'd just like consideration to be given that we do have a respectable, well-known, established tenant coming in who has good standing with the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and so there is concern on our part with limiting those hours. We, we advocate and respect that the direction that the city is going with their new alcohol ordinance, and perhaps if a change is made across the board, like everyone has mentioned, the CUP is renewable annually, and, you know, it could be given further consideration at that time. But at present, we would like to ask your favor to keep the hours as their hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So, that is the, that is the drugstore's hours of operation?
Yes, that's their hours of operation. And whether or not they can give a limited window for alcohol beverage sales, I do not know at this time. We'd have to contact them, but there is concern that they may not be able to, and that would therefore compromise our deal with them. Are there any further questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Since the public hearing is still open, we have an opportunity for others to speak.
Mr. Chairman, you, you have been, we have been handed one additional speaker slip. It's your discretion as to whether you wish to hear it.
I think the commissioner will hear.
Okay, Sheldon Carter.
Evening, Mr. Carter.
Evening. I'm Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner and staff. I'd like to, just, I'd, real quick comment. I'm listening to the discussion on limiting hours for this particular business establishment. If that were to be the case, just in the interest of fair business practice, because there are three other liquor purveyors on that corner, and not only them, but the rest of purveyors throughout the city, limiting this particular establishment doesn't seem to be, to be in the best interest of fair business practices. So, some, I think an issue like that may have to be taken up with, like, the council to limit all establishments if a limit was to be placed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No other speakers, Carter.
Mr. Rivera?
Mr. Chairman, you opened up the public hearing.
Right ahead, we're back in public hearing, go ahead.
Quite honestly, I have no question, I have no problem with what the applicant's representative just said. That is a pretty serious matter, and you probably could continue this until you got a definite answer from her, the national masters of Long's. I don't know. But some comments you made, Commissioner Jacobs, this is a case-by-case basis, it's a conditional use permit. Some of the outlets in the surrounding areas were grandfathered in when there was no local ordinance. We didn't get one till 1992 here. The Chevron gas station, I was involved in that protest, that came in when we had many market ordinance, but we didn't have the full-scale ordinance that we now have, and staff can confirm that, I believe. So, in alcoholic beverage control, it's not a matter of level playing fields. We're not going back to yesteryear. Most of the control is by the state ABC department, not the commission. So, it's more to it than a simplistic approach by looking at it as, what you is, they already sell at 6:00, why shouldn't we? That is not a debatable issue anymore, and perhaps your city attorney can help you on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. So, are we done with, well, hang on, are we done with public comments? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Dan. If we're done with public comments, nothing further, okay. Now, we'll close the public hearing again, hopefully for the last time. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, nothing, I certainly am not trying to say anything against what you are saying that, that's incorrect. I can agree with a lot of the things that you stand for and what, what you're saying tonight, but I, as you say, it's a case-by-case basis, but I'm not trying to put them on the same level playing field as the other three, other three corners. As far as I know, they sell at 6:00 and they sell singles. So, there are conditions on this, and we are looking at it on a case-by-case basis, but I think the, the city just went through this with seven to 10. They have an ordinance in place right now, so I don't know why we need to readdress something that they have already done unless there is a, a specific reason at this site that it needs to go from seven to eight. And so far, I haven't heard any reason that would specifically warrant this location going from seven to eight.
Well, I do, I, I do have a concern in light of what the applicant has said as far as jeopardizing that relationship with Long's Drug Store for the one hour, one-hour time difference, that does concern me. I, I wish that they were readily available to kind of answer that question, but it doesn't sound like that's, that's going to be happening tonight.
My, my concern about the sale between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. is I feel that the negative impact on a community is much greater risk than the fairness of being able to go to 7:00 a.m. And I'm thinking about the impact on the community. So, that's my feelings. Now, with situation with the tenant possibly not being able to keep their contract because of this seven to eight, certainly does give us more food for thought.
Right.
Now, we're not, we're not limiting actual hours of operation. How does that affect the alcohol sales, affects the other tenants also? Or, I'm trying to figure out how, we're not limiting the hours of operation, am I correct?
Not limiting.
Correct. You're not, you're not limiting the hours of operation of the, of the center nor the, any of the tenants beyond the seven to 10 for the Long's Drug Store, and the motion before us limits the alcohol beverage sales from 8:00 to 10:00 instead of 7:00 to 10:00.
I, I wish Long's was here also to, to tell me why that, that affects the, the contract, but unfortunately, we don't have that here today, so...
So, what we do have is we can amend that motion, and in a year from now, we can relook at it and see if it's a priority to us at that point.
You've got multiple choices. We can, we can adopt the motion as presented, we can, someone can offer an amendment. The second and the maker of the motion can, can amend their own motion and change it. And whatever our decision is, ultimately, the applicant has a right to appeal to the city council. So, although that, you know, takes time and adds to the process, which, but lots of folks can appeal, it's not just the applicant, actually, I believe. Others can appeal as well.
Oh, with that being said, I would ask Commissioner Smith if she would want to make a friendly amendment, and if not, I would be willing to amend, or make a motion to amend that condition.
So, in light of, if I understand what you're saying, in light of this new development, you are feeling comfortable moving forward with the normal operating hours with the, with the added assurance that we have, that we will go back and review the, we can go back and review the alcohol?
Feeling comfortable would not describe it, because I, I like the idea of going to 8:00 a.m., but I'm also business-friendly. I like this project, it looks nice, it's gonna be a nice development on the west side, and I would not want to lose this project over this seven to eight. So, with that being said, I will...
That's what I was saying when I first said I, when you first made your comments, that jeopardize, jeopardize that...
I would rather have the 8:00 a.m., but I will, I will approve the 7:00 a.m. because of the tenant and the review and...
So, can, can the chair take your conversation to mean that the motion is now to agree to the alcohol beverage sales hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
So, would I, would I withdraw, since, since it's already a condition? The condition, Condition 11 already states the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, I just withdraw my amendment?
No, because your motion has been made and seconded, it would be appropriate for either you or any of the other commissioners to make a, a motion to amend your motion. The motion to amend would be, need to be seconded and voted on, and whether it passes or fails, then you would vote on the main motion subsequently.
Do we need to go through all the conditions of the motion again, or are we just...
Just, just the amendment to the hours of operation, right? If that's somebody's pleasure to offer that motion. I think I heard Mr. Jacobs...
I will go ahead and make that, a motion to change the hours of operation from the original motion from 8:00 to 10:00 to 7:00 to 10:00.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So, the amendment is, rather than the eight, the hours 8:00 to 10:00 is back to Condition 11, 7:00 to 10:00.
Correct.
Would that be right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so it's withdrawing the amendment?
Pardon me?
It's withdrawing the amendment to Condition 11.
So, any further discussion? All done? Please vote.
Okay, the motion to revise the condition back to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. passes 7-0. You, you now have the main, original motion on the floor.
The main motion would be, it relates to the six-foot wall...
You want me to repeat the motion, or did, does everyone remember what the motion was?
I do.
Okay.
The main, the motion is, the, relates to the six-foot wall, relates to moving the trash enclosure to 3C. It relates to addressing the blowing dust issues, and it relates to the shopping carts, and I believe that's all there is. Is that correct?
That is what I have.
Okay, that's what I have as well.
That's a good suggestion.
So, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion on that, the main motion? Please vote. All right, thank you. Thank you all for your public, for your comments and participation on this item. We only have a couple more items, and rather than take a break, let's just go through it unless anybody needs to take a break. All right? Okay, Item 11. Item 11 is conditional use permit Number 0807. So, Item 11, we've, so it's appropriate to open the public hearing on this. The applicant is Journey Church. We have received a letter, an uncontested acknowledgement of the conditions. Do we have speakers on this?
Two, two representing the applicant, but one listing opposition.
I see, all right. So, then it would be appropriate, the public hearing is open, and it's appropriate to hear a staff report then, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. The request before you is the approval of a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a church within an existing industrial building in the light industrial zone. The primary concern on this issue had to do with available parking. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, the, the applicant has indicated that they have reached an agreement with an adjacent property owner to provide... they have reached an agreement, uh, with an adjacent property owner to provide, uh, the required amount of parking spaces on a lease basis. Uh, we have recommended to you a condition that, that would require them to, um, provide proof of that lease prior to occupancy and operation, uh, and would also require that if for any reason, uh, there was going to be a cancellation of that lease in the future, uh, that we be given 60 days' notice, and the use permit would become subject to review to determine the parking situation and whether there was any way to, uh, replace that loss of parking. So with that, with that condition, we've recommended to you approval of the request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Liddick. Uh, and you say the applicant is here as well?
Uh, I have two favoring, um, Jim Fielden.
Mr. Fielding, is it?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Fielden, Fielden Engineering Group. Um, I'm here representing the applicant as well as a longtime member of Journey Church, formerly Westview Church. Um, I appreciate the staff's efforts in helping us, uh, move through this process. We've been, um, fairly homeless for the last five years, trying schools, looking for other places, and almost every turn, we come up at a CUP to, uh, process our request. Um, so at this point, we've reviewed the conditions, and we're ready to move forward, and we appreciate, um, all your efforts. I'll remain if there's any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the, all right. Thank you, sir.
David Elmore.
Mr. Elmore?
Good evening, David Elmore, Journey Church pastor. Uh, wanted to say thank you for hearing this, and just the fact that I'm here is a pretty exciting thing. As Jim mentioned, after five years of searching for our location, for our church family, we think we've found a suitable place, and with a great deal of investment and time, and with city staff and the, uh, team members, uh, it looks like we've come to a place, hopefully, where, um, you, hopefully you'll find favorably, that we can call home, at least for the time period of our lease, as we prepare for future things. But, um, I'm really excited about that. Again, our church family is anticipating some great things here, and I appreciate your help on this.
Thank you. All right. And another?
Eugene, is it Porello?
I'm Eugene Porello. I own the building at 42166 and at 647 West Al, 14th Street. In this situation, this has been a, developed as a light industrial area, and the six buildings that were originally set up by Robinson and Smith were, were done in that manner. Uh, the planning commission has come up with this extra parking. Now, there's some issues. When this property was originally subdivided in 89, excuse me, the general plan was L1 and M1 and a half. Then it was changed to the O1. But at that time, it was brought out that there was 21 conditions of environmental impact report, and in the back, environmental elevation was that the site is located in a flood zone of AO 100, shallow flooding depths of one to three feet, as indicated by the flood insurance map, and could be exposed to people, property, to flood hazards. Now, I'll come back to that in a minute. When we looked at this property, when I came and looked at this property in 2001, the previous Robinson and Smith had built these properties for particular purposes. I own the building next door, and it was an auto body shop and a paint shop. The building they're going into or applying for was a meat grilling facility, and the building down at 647 was a soil test laboratory. Now, these all were in, and I don't know what the rest were, but those I do know. They were, excuse me, in business for approximately three to four years, and then they went out. My building was picked up by Western Lease, Western Insulation. The one next door was picked up by Refrigeration. The one at five was done by a, um, women's, uh, warehouse for, um, women's, not apparel, but cosmetics. And the building four was a shirt factory. That was a warehouse for shorts. In this time, got to learn to talk faster. Used to do this faster. Okay. There's this particular issue I brought up about the water. When I lived and bought this property, we asked for the planning, building permits and the plans from the company. They sent them to us. Yet in this thing, there's six-foot, three-strand barbed wire fence encircled my property and this property on the backside to the, to the, uh, well, either I shut up or what are you going to do?
Well, if I ask you a question, then your time gets extended, so I'll ask you a question.
Okay. All right. Good.
To clarify your question, you're, you are the building owner adjacent to this property?
Yes.
All right.
And I am also the building.
Go ahead and continue, because I wasn't clear where you're coming from.
Can you?
You, you can.
I can't. Which building is? These are, these are the maps, and pass them around. That's the building right there.
Go ahead, Mr.
And it's the six-foot fence, as we, were sent to us in 2001 when I purchased the property, designated, this would've been approved in 1992 when the buildings were built for these particular plants. And my question was, why was there a gate in the fence? So we went back to the, uh, sellers of the property, their CO. Now, this is third-hand because I didn't talk to him. I haven't found anything differently. He claimed the flood control had insisted on putting a gate in there because of the flood action in case somebody got trapped. There was a six-foot cyclone fence at the bottom end where the spool yard part is, and this six-foot would run 240 feet. There'd be no place for anybody to get out. That was the reason we had. I accepted that, and we've gone by that, uh, situation. In the meantime, the tenants of mine were being ripped off with gas and everything, so they put, uh, suffertein wire, added on there. And then they, in turn, locked the gates between the two parties. They locked the gate because the parties that were going on, and what you were talking about liquor, they were picking up all the cans and everything on these parties that were going on. Now, when this was originally developed, there was nothing out there at the time. There's two, I do want to show you. There's two maps or pictures I just had to tear from me. Road department, pick from the property. This is what was on the other side of the 101, which had become a trailer dump, and we kind of have cleaned that up.
Which, which lot is yours?
Mine's number one. Number one, this is number two, number three, and number four, and number five is mine. There, one, two, three, and four, you'll see, have a community, each one has a 30-foot community driveway between the two buildings. And you have to work between the two tenants in order to make this work out. And that's where we're coming into a, uh, problem. You'll notice there where the, uh, behind the, my building, there's the trucks that are parked, and behind the, um, refrigeration unit, the new, the new units were sitting on the ground to be put in, and you can see, uh, there's a big truck back in the back area to...
So, Mr. Pearl, if I could ask you, um, to summarize your concern, if I, if, what I'm hearing is, your concern is, you're opposed to this project because of the potential flooding impact as it relates to the safety and security of the tenant user as proposed, as well as, or surrounding property owners?
Well, surrounding property owners plus the community driveway, if you take his, this proposal here, these properties, as you see, they're 100-foot by the depth, were never designed for 180 people. You're opening up liability here that is ridiculous. And as a property owner on the other side, I have to look at that from my angle. The, the, I think I gave you these colored pictures tonight? Yeah, okay. If you notice, on picture eight, the sidewalk there is, is bent over because the trucks have to back in to bring in the articles into these buildings. So they jump the curb, crush that down to get in the 30-foot driveway. Then as you come on back, they have to, to meander in each other's parking to get back in behind the buildings. So the whole 30-foot driveway is used because of delivery system. Now, with a church, Sunday schools, all these kind of things, there's going to be limitations as to this driver being willing to go up that driveway, and it affects certainly our property. I don't, my big thing is, a church and this type of unit does not belong in a light industry zone. There's a church over on Sixth Street. They have ample parking in front of it, and this parking is predicated upon the approval of, as I understand, the neighbor next door. And I don't know, again, third-hand, we, the manager of this place approached them about putting a gate through so that the trucks could come through and deliver, and he was adamant, no. So that was where it stopped, so I don't know what's changed now, but something has changed. Last is that you've, in the conditions here, as I read it, in the future, if a new industrial use locates in the area, a new business may be required to address potential impact to the church. So if I lease this building of mine out to a boom builder or something like that, I have to have the church approval to be able to use this. And when I have purchased this, like everybody else, as a zone, light industry, I have met all those requirements. I don't see why this is being put on the property owners.
We'll, we'll let the staff answer that.
And again, the 180 hours, now, if somebody's going to say there's a church in building four, yes. We never received notification that there was going to be a hearing on that church. The first thing I knew about it was when the pastor called me to ask about leasing my parking lot for parking. I said, I leased the building, and the parking lot goes with the building. You'd have to talk to the, uh, leasur.
So you're saying you weren't noticed?
That's, that's right. The one down on building four, not this one, on building four.
Oh, okay.
No, I just sent you, there's a church in that building. Harvest something is the name of it. And, uh...
You were noticed on this project?
Beg your pardon?
You did receive notice?
Yes.
Okay.
I agreed with your first man that came here. You've got some things, but one of the last things here, it says, you can come and review the, uh, copies that the staff may require, obtain three days before this hearing. So this hearing's on Monday. I could come and see it on Friday. I came on Thursday. That seems to be very short notice, as far as I'm concerned.
It's what's required by law, and that's what we provide.
Well...
And you can also access this on the internet, and you can...
I, well, you're lucky with your help. I did get part of it. I didn't get the rest of it on the internet, okay?
Ms. Watson found it for you, huh?
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, they helped me out on that. So my position is that this is not a, a use for this area, and it is not, in my view, of keeping with a industrial, light industrial use.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any more, uh, public comments?
I have no other speakers cards.
Thank you very much. It's appropriate then to close the public hearing. And do we have a motion or, well, before we do that, um, there were a couple of, uh, issues raised as it related to flood zone. Could someone address that, please?
In May of 2005, FEMA issued a letter of map revision that removed this area from the 100-year flood zone. It is no longer in a special flood hazard area.
So that communication, that correspondence available if we wanted to provide, somebody with a copy, huh?
Yes. Uh, we, the city has a copy of the letter of map revision along with the revised map.
Very good. Thank you. All right.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Would it be, this is to Brian, would this be within our purview to add a condition that we review this on a yearly basis? Although I don't agree with everything that was brought before, so I think there is a, uh, a legitimate concern that parking could be a problem, um, given the light of the fact that it hasn't been allowed in light industrial, um, areas, I guess, in the past.
Yeah, yes. You can, you can add that condition. Com, commission historically has done that where there was maybe some uncertainty as to that kind of situation. The, the, we, we, for instance, had a nursery school that operated in a residential area for a number of years that had a periodic review of that type.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple. The, um, conditions of approval, recommended conditions of approval in state and federal law require, um, under Title 24, access, appropriate access and handicap access, as well as regular pedestrian access to this property, uh, from Seventh Street as well as, um, from the proposed parking area. There are some grade elevation changes there from the street and sidewalk to the front door of the building, which looked to be more than a few inches. And as well as from the, as well as from the parking lot proposal in the rear. Uh, path of travel issues with, you know, um, impervious access, impervious, uh, um, concrete or asphalt or decomposed granite or something to get pedestrians in and out, as well as gate widths and that sort of thing. So there will have to be some modifications done to this project to make it comply at, at, with, with very minimum standards, which will then, uh, compromise some of the parking spaces that are currently on-site, uh, looking at the site plan. The site plan's not up, but looking at the site plan. So if you're, if you're walking into the site from the east to the west through the new proposed parking area, right, um, you're going to have to end up walking through some existing parking spaces, so that'll cannibalize one or two of those probably.
As part of their building plan check, they will be required to demonstrate, uh, compliant access and path of travel, um, to meet, meet the requirements of the ADA.
Okay. What about the shared, um, circulation element driveway that was raised, which I also was concerned about? Um, those, those are, um, operational issues that are covered by the, you know, the CCNRs or some sort of a management agreement, which really we have no control over. Would that be right?
That would be my understanding, that we, they have a common driveway and...
However, the property line splits that driveway.
That means they would have a reciprocal access agreement to utilize that driveway in common, and to my knowledge, that would prohibit them from preventing the use of that driveway in common.
So, so when the parcel map was originally, when this was originally mapped and the properties were created, that reciprocal would be in there?
Yes.
And we're, we're confident of that? Okay.
Without going back and looking at the original parcel map and approval, I have to assume that it was set up that way, that it would be a normal practice to do so.
And then I'd asked this question previously, um, the site plan shows a 6224-square-foot building, however, the tax records show a 6536-square-foot building. So I don't know which is right, but it does affect parking. But overall, there's, appears to be offered, uh, more parking than required by code. Would that be correct?
Yes, and, and ultimately, they would be required to provide as part of their building plans, a, a layout that shows the amount of assembly area, and that's what the parking would be based on. based on.
Good. That's all I know. Any further questions? Anybody wish to make a motion? You want to turn on your mic?
Now I'll make a motion. I would move to adopt Resolution Number 08-18, approving conditional use permit Number 08-07, with the additional condition that the conditional use permit shall return to the commission on an annual review.
Thank you. A second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. All right, so we have a motion and a second with an additional condition for annual review. Any further discussion? Shall we vote, please?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, the next item is Item 12. And Item 12 is, the recommendation is to continue this CUP indefinitely. Would it be appropriate to open the public hearing on this matter or not?
Yes, I would do that. The request for the continuance indefinitely is at the request of the applicant. They don't wish to withdraw, but they may wish to bring it back before you at some point in the future. We would renotice the, the hearing, but it would be appropriate to go ahead and open and take action.
So if we, so if we open the public hearing, then if it does come back, it would be a continued public hearing?
Yeah, but we, we would renotice it because you wouldn't continue to a date certain.
Right. Okay. All right. So without objection, then, the public hearing is open on conditional use permit 0810. And the staff recommendation is, based on the applicant's request, is to continue this item indefinitely. So the public hearing is open. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have three, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if they wish to speak, given the situation.
All right. Why don't we, is the applicant here? No.
No.
Okay. So let's hear from the speakers and see if they'd like to speak.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Ray Shavera.
Since the applicant is not here, I withdraw.
And Arthur Ray.
I was just wondering what kind of market it was going to be.
If you could come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself. Is it Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we want to make sure we get you on the record. Thank you.
My name is Arthur Ray.
Thank you.
And I'm just kind of wondering what kind of market, we, we really need a grocery store in that area. Larta has moved a mile away, give or take, and there's a, the Ovalarta is open and available for a market or grocery store. There's also another one across Kitty Corner that's, I think it's still open, too. So we, we have opportunities for a grocery store there. Now just wondering what they wanted to do with this particular property. Is it where it is, but there's nobody here to answer it?
Well, our staff can certainly answer your question, and, and we will.
So Mr. Ray, is your question, where is this building located?
Yeah, is it, is it, are you familiar with it?
Yeah, there's a picture of it right up there. If you're familiar with where 10th Street and Avenue I intersect?
Yeah, is it the Ovalarta building?
No.
No.
No, in fact, it's on the other side of 10th Street West from that.
The other side of 10th?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay.
There's an auto parts store on the corner?
Yes.
And then it is just north of that auto parts store.
Right here.
Right there.
I believe it's currently occupied by some kind of a cigarette or smoke. Yes.
It's called the Smoke Shop right now.
That area there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not going to leave much, much space for grocery store, but, okay, you've answered my question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. And so, no further speakers? So the recommendation is to continue conditional use permit 80-10 indefinitely. Much pleasure.
So indefinitely means we'll see it when?
If somebody wants to apply, they will.
You'll see it if and when the, the applicant requests to have it placed back on an agenda, but he would have to pay the cost to renotice it for a hearing.
Thank you.
I move that we continue conditional use permit 08-10 indefinitely at the request of the applicant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 13 is, Item 13, tentative tract map 62929. It's appropriate to open a public hearing on this matter, which is a recommended denial of the tentative tract map. The public hearing's now open. Any speaker cards? No applicant?
I have no speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
We also have no, no letter. No one wishing to speak on this matter?
Yeah.
Then we will close the public hearing and consider an action. Much pleasure.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 08-20, denying the approval to tentative tract map Number 62929.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? Let's vote, please.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 14 is tentative parcel map 69446. It's appropriate to open a public hearing on this matter. We have received an uncontested letter on this. Do we have any speaker cards?
Nothing on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing on this item. All right. Then without any speakers, it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider an action.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 0821, approving tentative parcel map Number 69446.
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Item 15 is a tentative parcel map 69969. It's appropriate to open the public hearing on this matter. We have received a uncontested letter, or a letter uncontested, agreeing to the conditions. Do we have an applicant or speakers?
I have a speaker's card, Lorraine Pinley.
All right. No, no applicant here?
I don't believe she is the applicant.
Okay.
Or the rep, so probably would be appropriate to hear a brief staff report.
All right. Let's see. That's Mr. Miller. You haven't said anything all night, Dan. Now is your big chance.
My chance. Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. I'll read the report for 69969. The applicant is Lancaster Holdings LLC. The project is 7.78 gross acres in size, located on the southeast corner of Division Street and Future Avenue H4. Request is a subdivision for six industrial lots in a light industrial zone. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 808-22, approving tentative parcel map Number 69969. There have been no previous cases to come before the planning commissioner, city council, regarding this property. Okay? A portion of the site is bounded on the east by Division Street, which is currently dedicated a 90-foot right-of-way and improved with one lane of traffic in each direction. Review of pertinent environmental documents has disclosed no significant adverse impacts resulting from the proposed subdivision once mitigation measures are added. All six parcels of the proposed subdivision would be approximately 1.3 acres in size. Division of the property would allow the development of future industrial projects on smaller sites and with better access. Since this parcel map has been designed for future development, staff is requesting only street dedications and to pay for the required median in Division Street at this time. Future development of the six parcels would be conditioned to provide full street improvements, environmental analysis, and onsite improvements in a logical manner, as determined by the Director of Public Works and Planning. For example, Division Street improvements would be required prior to development of parcels fronting Avenue H4. A biological resource assessment was conducted for the project, and no desert tortoises, burrowing owls, or their sign were observed. However, suitable habitat exists on the site for such things as burrowing owls or migratory non-game native birds. In order to ensure the impacts to burrowing owls and migratory non-game native birds are less than significant, mitigation measures haven't added to the project. A Phase 1 environmental site assessment was prepared for Califor, by California environmental geologists and engineers. There were some noted illegal trash dumping on the south portion of the site, but no other hazardous materials were located, and nothing else was observed. The density of the development is consistent with the general plan designation of light industry. The proposed subdivision meets the city's zoning requirements for light industrial zone, and sufficient access, utilities, and infrastructure exist or can be extended to serve the project. Therefore, staff is recommending the commission approve tentative parcel map Number 69969. If you should have any questions, I'll try to answer them for now.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Looks like the applicant's representative just showed up. So, any questions from the commission before we ask for public comments? The applicant's representative is here, so...
My name is Dan Stead with Penfield &amp; Smith. We represent the applicant and have reviewed the staff reports and are in concurrence with all the conditions. We can answer any of your concerns and address any concerns that might come up from somebody else.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any questions from the commission? No. Thank you. We have another speaker?
Yes, Lorraine Pinley.
Thank you. My main concern was I just, and I believe you answered it, you said this is a project for future. It's not something that's going to be happening soon. That basically was my main concern.
I see.
So I thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, any other comments from staff or the public? It's appropriate then to close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 08-22, approving tentative parcel map Number 69969.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. That leads us to Director's announcements.
The only, the only thing that I have, Mr. Chairman, is we've been kind of polling the commission in terms of availability of dates for potential workshops on the general plan. I think we've gotten response back from most of you for those special meeting dates, but if you haven't responded, Joy will be contacting you so that we can try and get that, that process moving.
Well, she's not looking at me. Who is she looking at?
She's not looking at me.
Folks, you know, the people have vacations and, and all sorts of things happen in their lives, so, you know, it's a very important activity, and, and there will likely be multiple hearings on the general plan. However, you know, if all can't attend, I'm assuming you will schedule when the majority can, so we can...
Yes.
Move this along. I know the community is anxious to, particularly the folks that were involved with the, participating and creating the recommendation. Lots of time, lots of hours, thousands of hours, and hundreds of people involved, so we'd like to move along quickly as well, I think, and as soon as possible. All right. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ludke?
That is it.
You know, I said, gee, we're going to move this, the rest of the agenda along an hour ago, and here we are, without taking a break. There's a couple of things I wanted to discuss. One is on the agenda discussion of, in consideration of meeting days and times, which we talked about last time briefly. And if we're all satisfied with the Monday day, Monday meeting day, are we all satisfied with it, or anybody wish to change it? Are okay? Staff's okay? We're keeping or...
Excuse me. I think she, I think...
You haven't...
I have no objection to Monday, but I'd like to start a little earlier, if it's at all possible. And I know it might be, the problem might be Jonathan's work schedule.
You didn't see what Mr. Jacobs, he was, he was giving the victory sign.
Well, you know...
I know, Mr. Irvin, you, you commuted to Edwards, right?
I do, I do. I do commute to Edwards. My normal workday, you know, usually 4:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So it's a possibility we can do it. I'll come straight here, but I want to make sure that, you know, we don't make it too early, so that it doesn't disqualify me from being here. But I do, I'm definitely all for making it earlier due to the fact that, you know, it all gets us home to our families earlier. I know we're a little bit more sharp earlier in the day, so, you know, I'm, I'm for it.
Well, we've had almost three and a half hours tonight, I guess, plus whatever time we collectively took to prepare, which appears to me to have been considerable. Folks were, took their time and took their hours to analyze what we were up against this evening, and, and I think, without being boastful, I think we all should be commended for that. I think it's the important thing that we're doing, and, and we're all doing a great job, I think. So if, so are you suggesting, Mr. Irvin, that, you know, so it's...
5:30 at the earliest.
5:30 at the earliest?
You know, anything earlier than that is going to be, it's going to be a stretch, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think we also need to be sensitive to the community also.
Right.
We do live in a commuter community.
That's right.
And so I think 5:30 is kind of a stretch for some of them that would like to attend. I think 6 o'clock may be the best time.
Six. Sounds good.
Maybe a balance between the two.
Okay. Any objections?
Why do you have to put a condition on that?
What's that?
Why do you have to put a condition to review it every year? Condition fifteen.
Review it after a year? Review it after a month?
Well, that's what the, that's what the council's doing.
Your bad, Dan.
I would personally, I'd love 5 o'clock, but I don't know that it would work well for the community.
Right. Well, and, and, you know, and I'm assuming from the kinds of, we've had, you know, we've only met twice. We've had two agendas. They've been rather lengthy, 15 to 30-some items. The future agendas possibly would be a little shorter. However, when we get into the public hearing aspects, you know, maybe we limit our time on those. Maybe we, we put an end time on them, so we don't stretch out into the, you know, because people have to get up early and go to work and commute and that, so, you know. But, but again, depending on the circumstance, Jonathan, you can't get here before five, before 5:30.
Well, it'd be a stretch. I mean, I don't want to get any tickets. I don't want to, you know, put any bad karma on the count, on the commission. But I think, you know, when we come into the larger issues, where there's going to be a lot of public discussion, maybe have a town hall meeting, you know, separate of the vote, or, you know, something where everybody gets to speak and nobody's left out.
Well, the interesting thing about the, the, the public hearing process, if we're going to be considering the general plan, for instance, and you've got 20 or 30 speakers, if you start it at 5:00, and you're going to be going till 8, 9, 10 o'clock anyway, depending on what you want to cap it, so the folks, I mean, they're going to come and go, and people come and go here, depending on the agenda as well. I mean, other agencies meet at, you know, 9, 10 o'clock in the morning, and so if it's important to the community, they show up. And I would suspect that that would be the case here on contentious issues as well. So, you know, historically in this, in this community, it's been an evening meeting, no question about that. But, so, if, if the... no question about that, but, so, if, if the consensus is 5:00, 5:30, 6:00?
I think, I think we came up with a consensus of 6:00.
6:00? Okay. So, without a motion, per se, would it be appropriate to ask staff to prepare a resolution for our next meeting to start it at 6:00, or can we adopt a motion now?
You, you may simply be able to set it, but, but I'll need to do some checking on it. I don't know whether you formally need to adopt a resolution. What I would suggest is that if your intent is that meetings would start at 6:00, we can, we can implement that beginning in August. If you do, based upon, you know, city attorney's review, if you do need a formal resolution, then we'll start August meeting at 7:00, and we'll put that resolution on as an item in September. You can start at 6:00.
So that, so then, just to be formal, then, someone should motion to start a meetings at 6:00 p.m. Our regular planning commission public meetings, the third Monday of every month, at 6:00 p.m. That would be the motion. I'll make the motion. Somebody else doesn't have to do it.
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the city attorney is indicating to me, he believes there needs to be a formal resolution, but we will double-check it.
Okay.
Okay. One last question, is if we review this in three to six months and we decide...
Sure.
We can change the time at any time.
Yeah, I think we can, just see how it goes, yeah. So, is it okay if we vote on that? So then, you know, we're...
Yes. If, if nothing else, we would take it as a correction.
I caution on voting, only because the council did something different when they were, they heard, had public hearings, or the public, they heard from the public prior to changing the meeting time. I want to be careful.
It's been on our agenda for two, two times, so, if somebody's...
Yeah, I think the effect of this would be that we would place it on, the formal resolution on your agenda for August, and you obviously could take any public testimony at that time prior to adopting that resolution, if you chose to.
Okay. So, your suggestion, we do not vote on it, Mr. City Attorney?
It would be a direction to just place in a resolution item.
Yeah, as, as a technical legal matter, it has been agendized. If you, if you would like to vote on it, I don't believe that there's a problem doing so. In the alternative, if you'd like to place it on next, next month's agenda to give the public an opportunity to comment, there's not a problem doing that as well, in which case, you would likely just need to give direction to staff to do so.
True. Okay. So, if I, if I remember my motion, it was, it was to set, to direct staff to set a meeting date at 6:00 p.m. beginning next month. Wasn't that my motion?
Yes.
August.
At the regularly scheduled third Monday. And that was, that was the motion, and that was the second. Yeah, okay. So unless we hear from you, otherwise, we'll be meeting at 6:00. All right? What about the briefing meeting? Any change?
We meet at 6:00.
Would we, would we be meeting at 6:00 and 7:00 next month, right? And then, we'd adopt the resolution at that meeting?
What was the formal wording of the resolution or the, the action?
To direct staff.
The resolution changed to...
Okay. Okay. Okay, so there will be a resolution on your next meeting?
Okay. All right, moving right along. Any discussion or consideration of the second meeting in Monday? It's now, now scheduled at 5:30 in the planning conference room, and that's, that's a tight schedule, I know, for you, Jonathan, but...
I'll forget the snacks if it's...
Pardon?
I'll forget the snacks if it's any earlier, I'm sure.
Well...
Somebody else.
I guess nobody wants to change that. Okay. Hmm? All right. One other thing, so we can get out of here. The state legislature passed a bill recently, Senate Bill 1137. Among other things, it, it gives cities an opportunity to impose fines for violations of any owner of foreclosed properties, which basically is the lender, on properties that had financing on them from 2003 until present, who lay waste or otherwise let properties deteriorate in a, in the community. It was recently passed, I think, on July 14th. And I would suggest that that might be something that, I don't know if, if the commission can instigate it, but it may be something that we wish to do relative to giving some more teeth to the community as it relates to cleaning up the foreclosed property waste, if you will, or allowing those owners, those loaners in due course, the lenders typically allowing those properties to deteriorate, thereby allowing the neighbors to deteriorate and vandalism and those kinds of things to take place, so, anyway, it's been chaptered, Chapter 69, Senate Bill 1137, so, and I think I sent a copy to the, to the city attorney, so, okay. I had one other thing. Mr. Irvin, are you going to talk about something tonight, or no? Yeah, okay. Good. All right. And then, I think we're done with our agenda. Unless there's any public business from the floor and any non-agenda items, this portion of the agenda is allow individuals the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on any non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware that this, of this, when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak?
Ray Shavira. Yes, I have one speaker.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ray Shavira.
Oh, all right. Mr. Shavira?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And at 10:30 something, we're adjourned until August 11th at 5:30 p.m. in the large planning conference room at City Hall. Thank you very much.
The binder, the binder?